So, let's call the meeting to order. We're ready to begin. This is the Planning Commission is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 6:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Chair Trowbridge.
Present.
Vice Chairman Trusdale.
Present.
Commissioner Goines.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Here.
Commissioner Buckley.
He's excused, if you would.
And Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a quorum. I call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so that we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. Okay, are there any, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the February 26th meeting of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes.
Motion's been made. Please signify support by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by saying no. Motion carries 6-0. Good. Now, let's move to our housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Item number eight, the applicant is requesting that this item be held in abeyance to the April 23rd, 2009 Planning Commission meeting to allow for the re-notification of the subject application due to modifications to the request. Item number 23, staff is requesting that this item be stricken due to the application being incomplete. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone here wishing to speak on either of these items? 8 and 23. Hearing none, a motion would be in order for the...
Might have somebody come.
Oh, no. Are you 8 or 23, sir?
Are you saying that 23 is being stricken?
Yes, sir.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. So, seeing no one, we can entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that these items be brought forward in accordance with staff's recommendation.
Thank you for your motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Hearing none, the motion carries 6-0. And when I say 6-0, it includes the ongoing observation that one is absent and excused. Thank you. We can now move to the one motion, one vote items. The following items are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application, or a member of the public, or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item number six is a RQR 33286. The applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor LLC. The owner is Ewing Investments. It's a partnership required for review of an approved variance which allowed an 80-foot tall, 14-foot by 48-foot off-premise sign billboard where 40 feet is the maximum height required or allowed at 1405 A Street. And I'll have to abstain from this item, if you would, because I have an ongoing relationship with Lamar due to a campaign. I'm sorry.
Staff.
It's one plus one.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go.
This was advertised as a public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on this item? Seeing no one, closed public hearing. Commissioner's comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve item six, RQR 33286, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
And seven?
And seven.
RQR 33287.
Is there another comment? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And please note that Chairman Trowbridge is abstaining.
Both items go forward to council on May 6th.
We can now move to item number nine and related items 10 and 11. Item number nine is a re-notification. It's zoning 32514. The applicant is Nevada Hand Inc. The owner is Silver Sky 2 LP from U undeveloped M medium-density residential general plan designation to R3 medium-density residential adjacent to the north side of Silver Sky Drive, approximately 500 feet east of Roland Whaley Way. Item number 10 is notification of variance 33012 to allow a 79-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 99 feet. Note, this application is being amended to allow a 79-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 136 feet. Item number 11 is the re-notification of site development review 33010 for a proposed two- and three-story 120-unit senior citizen apartment development with a waiver to allow a zero-foot landscape buffer along the west perimeter where six feet is required. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed zoning district is in conformance with the general plan, and staff is recommending approval. Staff is also recommending approval of the associated variance as it's minor in nature, and any associated impacts will be lessened by means of additional landscape buffering. Overall, subject development is compatible with the scale and massing of the surrounding development and will not negatively impact the surrounding area, as well as it will further the goals of the general plan by encouraging senior housing. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the site development plan review. Please note additional letters of protest and support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter to approach the microphone. First up, we'll have, on behalf of the application...
Good evening. Jackie Haas, 295 East Warm Springs Road. We agree with staff's recommendations, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the Planning Commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments, I'll make a motion for approval of item nine, subject to all staff's recommendations.
No other comments. Motion's been made. Please signify a yes vote by saying yes.
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 Those in opposition, say no. Motion carries 6-0.
With regards to item number 10 of VAR 33012, motions for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made. Please cast your votes by signifying yea for support.
Yes.
Yes.
Yea.
And nay for opposition. No opposition, so that one also passes 6-0.
Item 12, I'm sorry, item 11, SDR 33010, motions for approval, subject to all staff's recommendations.
Motion's been made. Please...
If I may, I have an added condition. In this case, because the parking and the development is based upon the project being a senior citizen housing project, we need to add the condition that the occupancy shall be limited to those 55 or older to the extent allowed by law. Thank you.
Okay, so amended.
On 11, because the parking is based upon the senior citizen housing use.
And the applicant agree with that additional condition?
We agree.
Okay. And the maker of the motion has agreed to the amendment, so those in support signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. In opposition, signify by saying no. Hearing none, motion carries 6-0.
All items go forward to council on May 6th.
We now move to item number 11, which is, I'm sorry, 12, which is the waiver 32158. The applicant is Royal Construction. The owner is Spinnaker Homes 5 LLC. Request of a waiver of downtown development standards to allow a four-foot sidewalk without an amenity zone along a 40-foot and a 50-foot portion of Deer Springs Way where a five-foot sidewalk with a three-foot amenity zone is required adjacent to Deer Springs Way, approximately 400 feet east of Fort Apache Road. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance in order for the applicant to meet with NV Energy to address some safety concerns and other landscaping concerns. The applicant did meet with NV Energy. Planning Department staff was on hand. The applicant does have a presentation as to what was the outcome of that meeting. In regards to the waiver itself, staff is still unable to support the requested waiver and is recommending denial.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and ask anyone in attendance wishing to speak to please approach the microphone. First up, we'll be on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening. Ben Young with Royal Construction, SBA Development. This is true. At the council's request, we had a meeting at the site whereby Nevada Power was present, City of Las Vegas, Public Works, and Representing Land Development was present, us, Thomas and Engineering, and then also Planning Department was also there. In that regard, all of us discussed the elements of this issue, what could be done, what would be agreeable to all the different entities, and as a result, we determined that on the west side of the switchgear, and I've taken photographs and done some little sketches to help demonstrate to the council, you know, what we're talking about here, and I'm going to put these out there, not the best drawings in the world, I'm no artist, but I think it does help put across the idea of what we're talking about doing, and I, that seems to be able to be seen pretty well. The first item was, is on the west side of the switchgear, there is a little concrete pad that is disjointed with the rest of the city sidewalk. The Planning Department suggested that what we do is we remove that little pad from the, from the, next to the Nevada Power prefabricated pad that they have there, and actually repour that back into the scoring sidewalk detail that is the town center standard to make that, dress that up and make that look a little better.
The purpose of that is to eliminate the tripping hazard that exists?
Partly that, but tripping hazard, but as well as that, just the overall continuity of the area around the switchgear.
Thank you.
We also determined that back here in this corner where I'm pointing, there is room for about a two-foot by three-foot landscape area, which we want to put there to put some landscaping, hopefully to train cat's claw or something like that to grow up on the wall to help actually soften the wall behind the switchgear also. This was an item that was suggested, and it's further down on my list. So, in relationship to that, item one, as we all discussed, removing this tripping hazard, repouring this, and getting the continuity of the sidewalk to be more uniform in that area. Item number two, we discussed, was on the front of the switchgear, remove all of the curbing and that that currently exists, and repour that so it's a nice, uniform appearance all the way in front of the switchgear in that area. And then looking at it from a little different angle, same type of thing, to where the steps going up to their access in that switchgear area winds up carrying across there to where that looks better. Also, on this back corner, we're able to get a planter in there, and again, to plant a growing vine-type material that will actually grow up onto the wall behind to help soften that area and soften that wall in relationship to that. The third item that was discussed was the fact that we place a pipe railing, the length of the switchgear in front of the switchgear, so that since this is a relatively, the sidewalk itself is out against the curb and it's not buffered by the landscape strip, for health and safety and deterrent to traffic pedestrians, you know, around this and not put them in jeopardy with street traffic and that type of thing, is to put a sort of a pipe rail assembly in front of the, in front of the whole switchgear for the length of the switchgear. In that regard, Nevada Power was the only one that had any complaints in relationship to that because they need the access for bringing in equipment in the event they have to switch things out, add a new switchgear, this type of thing. So, it was collectively agreed that that could be satisfied if we made this a removable assembly. So, in that regard, we would core into the curb, set a sleeve, slip the pipe rail into it. It would be bolted with a padlock assembly that would then slip through the bolts so that Nevada Power at any particular time could remove the whole assembly if, in fact, they did need to get into service the equipment or anything of that nature. And then, fourthly, the conversation was about providing landscape materials in these areas so that we, in fact, would help screen and help soften this whole area so it didn't appear to be such a monolith in the community. And again, that's where we had the areas of the two landscaping that we could add, and then on either ends of the switchgear, where we do have the town center landscaping coming into that area to overplant and plant with the more lush material and that to help screen the view as you're driving down the street to actually see the area. As a result of the meeting, it appeared that everybody was okay with our proposals, as well as mutually agreed that this would be the best solution to deal with this particular problem, so. And that's basically my presentation in relationship to what we encountered and discussed at the meeting.
Is there anyone else in attendance who would like to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
If I may. Doug, do you have conditions that would respond to what was just presented?
Yes, I do. One of the things that I had needed clarification on from the applicant and also from Public Works, the condition I have in front of me here would be the railing would be in front of the utility box, not along the roadway, and I was wondering if Public Works would have any concerns about the railing along the curbing there.
Well, certainly, that would not be my first choice. I would prefer if the railing were required, if the Planning Commission believes the railing to be a proper attribute of the site, that that railing be located away from the curb line. If it must be on the curb line, I guess I would say I'd want the traffic engineer to sign off on that first, so whatever condition, if it is required to put such a fence in the right-of-way, they need to get traffic engineers sign off on that.
Okay. I also have an observation along those same lines. Having been through the skateboard period, that front edge of that power panel there is what you call a grind, and that's where the kids will be coming from the short end, would skate along to the back end, and when the skateboard scoots off from underneath them, it shoots right out into the traffic, sometimes taking the child with them, which is not a good idea, and I think the way to avoid it, because you're out there with the concrete crew anyway, might be to move that railing in close up against that, what's going to be a grind rail, whether you like it or not, and it would eliminate it. If that alternative doesn't work, perhaps some V-cuts in the front edge of that existing concrete slab that goes along there, so it would serve as a disincentive for skateboarders to use it, not because I'm against skateboarders, but I am against kids and skateboards flying out into the traffic.
Certainly, anything that Planning Commission recommends and Planning Department recommends will support and offer. The idea of the pipe rail was a byproduct of our previous Planning Commission meeting, and when there was concern about the narrowness of, or the fact that the sidewalk itself is compliant in terms of code, but the fact that the landscape strip isn't there, there was some concern that it placed the pedestrian too close to traffic. If the Planning Commission would like us to put rails in both locations, you know, we're certainly receptive to doing that, too. Again, we're looking for direction and acceptance from you guys.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I think I might have been the one that suggested that on the last go-around, and it's for that very reason, because you take the sidewalk, and all along the road there, you've got this landscape buffer between the road and the sidewalk itself, and then right at this point where the box is, the sidewalk jettisons out right next to the road, and so the concern is, well, you know, they put that box right in the middle of the sidewalk, and we can't go around it on the inside, right? So, the pedestrians are going to have to go on the outside, and that puts them, and there were protests that came in as well, so that puts us right on the street. And so, the concern was, as kids are riding their bikes or walking along this path, they're going to, it's going to put them right on the curb, and is there anything we can do to keep them separate from the traffic that's right there? I mean, we're talking within a foot. That's not a turning lane, unfortunately, that's a travel lane right onto the curb, isn't it?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, and then that's my concern. What, the speed limit there, if I remember correctly, is 35 along that stretch, and so you've got cars going 35 miles an hour and pedestrians walking, and that's my concern. So, I would love to see something there to protect the pedestrians as they're walking by. It just doesn't seem fair that we're going to squeeze them and not give them some kind of protection. But I understand if we need to get some kind of traffic studied, or at least their input on it, so that we don't create a traffic hazard, and I understand the need for that, but I'm deeply concerned about the pedestrians at that point because they use that. They use that walkway.
I agree with you, Commissioner. My feeling is, I don't know if I can be assured that if you have a mom pushing a stroller with a two-year-old walking next to her, or a person in a wheelchair with an attendant walking next to them, if, in fact, one of those, one of them aren't going to have to walk on the street to bypass this, and this is just an uncomfortable vote for me.
Do we actually know what the distance is from the curb to the front edge of that box?
As I understand it, it's roughly four feet.
Four feet?
Yes.
Are you sure? Well, let's make sure we're talking about the same thing. We're talking from the edge of that curb where I see the concrete curbing that the box is sitting on top, out to the road, is four feet? I think that's only about two feet.
Can we show that picture again, please?
It's the one we see now. Nope.
Go back. Item 12.
Okay, I've got it. I've got the original wood that are not overdrawn. Here, this is a good, the actual distance is in excess of three feet. You've got a two, and this, well, you're, there we go.
That's three feet across there?
Yeah, we've got a two-foot stone, and then this is a little bit greater than a foot, so you've got three-plus feet all along this front section here.
All right, all right. So, we have three feet along there going around...
Plus the six inches of the curb, so it's in excess of three feet. And my thinking was, is to run the pipe rail...
Right on the curb.
Core in right in the curb, down into the curb line. And certainly, if it's the commission's wish, we could certainly also put a pipe rail along here to specifically direct everybody through the area. We're going to repour this curb all along here anyway, so in that regard, I would design it so that we've got a six-inch wide curb there to where we could actually sleeve down into that, and this whole area is specifically directed right through the pathway where that switchgear is. We'd certainly be receptive to doing that.
What is underneath that rectangular box there? I mean, because I honestly think that railings on either side is not a good idea, but just some type of disincentive to using that curb for skateboarding purposes is, you know, my first thought was just cuts on the curb to make it so it's not smoothed edge.
There's an underground vault here for Nevada Power Future, and there's a power line and conduit into that vault already, and a manhole that doesn't show right here very well in the picture, but, and then the box and the transformer, the switchgear, sitting on that.
But is it a, the box is like a four-inch pore of concrete or something is what I'm shooting for. It's the front edge of it, the street-side edge of the thing.
The box itself?
Yes.
It recesses about six inches behind...
The top edge of it, the kids are going to be grinding a skateboard on.
Correct. That's your concern is right here on that.
Right. If they could make it so it's unattractive as a skateboard edge, you know, just a little V-cut that's, you know, every six inches, a two-inch deep V-cut.
Okay.
Works. That's what we did in the old park system that I used to run.
I wouldn't think that Nevada Power would have any problems with doing that.
You'd need some disincentive, because when the kid shoots the skateboard out there and falls and gets run over, they're going to come for Nevada Power, they're going to come for you guys, they're going to come for everybody.
Sure, no question about it. Yeah, and again, we could, you know, certainly discuss other options with Nevada Power as to how the edges might be deformed or restricted in some fashion, even to the degree that maybe we don't put a full-on pipe rail, but we only put a one- or a two-foot fence assembly or something along there.
If it's got a pipe, that just becomes a greater challenge and even more fun.
Well, that could be, too, you know. Maybe if it's elevated to a certain degree there...
My son is available for consultations, if you'd like.
Is he? Well, maybe that's the thing. Draw him in as a consultant, and he can advise us as to what not to do.
He can show you how to tear it up.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, the applicant obviously heard the concerns we raised at the last meeting loud and clear, and I think they've done several things to enhance this. I understand what Commissioner Ellsworth and Commissioner Quinn's concerns with the fencing, but I'm of the opinion, I think the fencing might create more potential risk than it solves if we're putting a railing right at the curb line. I could, if we're concerned potentially about skateboarders, all a railing does with, is a place for people to sit, and they can hang their fannings over the fence into the right-of-way, and, I mean, I think there's more potential for a problem than a regular sidewalk that typically, most of our residents understand how to walk. But I do, I do think the attempt to create some planting, repouring the surface is a, I would support that.
And I agree with you. I see where a railing causes some additional problems there. So, is there another solution to protect the pedestrians as they use it, or do we just say, nope, that's as good as we're going to get, and they're just going to have to be careful when they walk through that section?
Well, it's a small section there, but when you look at, even the wider sidewalk is really up against the curbing in the right-turn lane with, where it has no pedestrian realm, or the landscape realm, if you will, up against the curbing. It's just, it's a function of the way, I'd say 85% of our streets are designed, and we're doing a great job of creating these landscapes and these meandering sidewalks, but unfortunately, we can cure five things, and we can't solve every concern, because I understand the need for the power vaults, and they are where they are, and, you know, but I don't think we would improve this by putting railings right on the curb line, because I could see a car with a wide bumper clipping the railing and creating more of a risk out there for pedestrians walking along. So, like, sometimes we, the attempt is to do as much as we possibly can to make it right.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I just need a short, pithy clarification. I note that this came on our agenda on 2/12/09, and we obeyed it at the applicant's request so that they could work with, find some additional time to coordinate the design of the landscaping of the amenity zone, and then it came back for the Planning Commission on 3/12, and I think at that time, we asked that the matter be obeyed. The Planning Commission did, and I think you've attempted to mitigate some of the issues. But here we are at 3/26, and I'm not real clear on what we're voting on. My hope is that if you come forward in the future, that you can provide all that information that you put on the overhead prior to the meeting so that we could review it beforehand. So, I think I'm prepared to vote, but I need to know what I'm voting on. So, maybe between the staff or the applicant, someone can synthesize what it is that we're seeking. I'm hearing a couple of things. One is, and I appreciate your efforts at trying to resolve this, but I'm hearing that the design that we have is as good as we're going to get if, in fact, we're going to approve this. So, between my colleagues, the staff, or the applicant, can someone maybe tell me what it is that we're seeking here?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, let me read a couple, if approved, of the conditions that I think we can, that the applicant has offered at this time. The applicant shall provide additional curbing concrete along the underside of the utility pad, along the south and east side of the pad, in order to fill in the hollow area. Additional condition, the applicant will slope and repour an existing two-inch step along the west side of the utility pad, making the... utility pad, making the existing step flush with the existing sidewalk, eliminating a, that would eliminate a tripping hazard, but that's not part of the condition, that's just a note. And then, an, an additional condition, the applicant shall provide a three-foot by three-foot landscape planter area on the northeast and northwest corners of the utility pad, planted with three five-gallon shrubs. And then I do have a condition for the rail itself, if that's part of the, the item, or, or two rails. That would read as such, the applicant shall provide a railing around the utility box to mitigate any safety hazards concerning the existing pad. And if there's a rail to be going on the public sidewalk, the applicant shall provide a railing back of the curb acceptable to the traffic engineer along the three-foot sec, the sidewalk, the three-foot sidewalk section in front of the utility box.
And, and Mr. Young, are those things that you can, that you would agree to?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Young, are you going to maintain the maintenance on that landscape during the year? Like, do you have a plan? 'Cause, you know, like, a tree will die, are you gonna go back and replant it so it stays looking nice? 'Cause so often, we see things put in, and then they drop dead, and then nobody goes back and fixes them. So, I mean, are you gonna make a solid commitment to this? 'Cause, I mean, you almost got my vote, but I'm really not. I mean, I just...
Well, let me say this. This particular unit four of Spinnaker Town Center One, we have not yet acquired a bond release as a result of this being a, a condition of, of, of the bond. So we have maintenance responsibility. We have submitted to the planning commission a new Studio VBM landscape design for all of Unit Three and Unit Four, as well as the median in Fort Apache. And so it, it will be our responsibility, and, and we commit to, to maintain this until, at which time, we would turn it over to the HOA. But that won't occur until we are able to get our bond release, you know, for these two units. And, and we've been working on, on, you know, moving forward to get these bond releases. So, I can assure you that in the period of time between when the Homeowners Association accepts responsibility and landscape maintenance of this area, that SBA Royal will take the responsibility to maintain it. It's our fiduciary responsibility to the homeowners, as well as to the community and to the city, that we do, do that. So...
I, I believe you've convinced me that this is the best you can do in this area, and thank you for the time and effort you've put into working with the city.
Thank you very much for hearing me.
I think we're ready for a motion at this point, then?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Public Works?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to clarify through you, the condition as read in by Mr. Rankin, the railing was on the far side of the sidewalk, adjacent to the, the vault?
I, I read two conditions. One, one requiring a, a railing around the utility vault to mitigate any safety hazards that would be adjacent to the vault. And the other condition was to provide a railing back of curb acceptable to the traffic engineer. If, and that's the way it read. So there'd be two ra, two different conditions.
Yes. I, I just wanna clarify that there may not be any railing acceptable to the traffic engineer. So if it requires a railing, that would be a challenge.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chairman, my motion would be to follow staff's recommenda, as-if-approved recommendation with the conditions read in by Mr. Rankin, but deleting the railing. I think the railing is a problem in, in a couple of different ways, as you've raised. Both railings. I, I think everything else they've done i- is an appropriate solution, but I think the railing would be a mistake. And, and so my motion would be to delete, to follow staff's as-approved conditions with excluding the railing.
How about the distancing for the skateboard?
And, and that would also include the efforts to score the concrete, or, or do something with regard to removing the attractiveness as a skateboard exercise area.
Motion's been made. All in support of that indicate so by saying yea.
Yes.
And opposed, say no.
No.
There you go. We've got one no, and five in support.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
We now move to item number thirteen, which is...
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Item number thirteen is variance thirty-two eight seventy-three. The applicant owners, Antonio and Christina Sosa, to allow sixteen parking spaces where twenty-four are required for the conversion of a five-hundred-square-foot of office to a restaurant use at fourteen ninety-nine North Lamb Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this item has been properly re-noticed in conformist with Nevada state requirements. The proposed conversion of office space to a restaurant use will result in the subject site becoming deficient approximately thirty-three percent of its required parking. As the choice to intensify the use is on-site is preferential in nature, the hardship is self-imposed and cannot be supported. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of this application. Please note additional letters of protest and a letter of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record, behalf of the applicant we have.
Yes, I'm the applicant. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Timayala forty-six under Sunset Road, representing the applicant this evening. What we have here is, well, first of all, I wanna thank staff for working with us, trying to accomplish the best we could in, of parking in this, in this project. We, we're getting rid of the, this is a site plan. This wa, was previously approved when they, they came for a zone change and a design review. And we have sixteen parking stalls to here, and we have an excess space that was, this is in the back of the property. This property is a plus to the neighborhood, is very well landscaped. I don't know if any of the members of the board, they have been around this, this project. Architecturally, design is very well fit for this area. It's, like I say, it's a very nice project. But due to a financial hardship, you know, is, my client has spent a lot of money trying to do this project. And right now, we are trying to maximize the use for the building. And what we are having in the back of this property, that it will be right here, in this part, is gonna be like five hundred feet, is a five hundred feet area, that we're gonna use it like a Dunkin' Donuts. So it's actually like pick-and-go, you know, pick it up, the donuts and go. They don't gonna eat there, because there is no room to, to actually have tables, or have any place where they can sit there as a restaurant. But donuts, we can have that. And, and with that also, in this side of the property, where the trash enclosure is, the trash enclosure is here, we are adding two more spaces, having there eighteen spaces, and we are asking just for six more spaces. The variance is actually for six spaces. And since the use is less intense than a restaurant, we're not asking for a zone change, we're not asking for a C1, where you can have a restaurant, or a bar, or whatever, beer and wine, or something like that. We respectfully ask you for the approval of this application. Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter?
My name is Mildred Tacy, T-A-C-E-Y. I own a mobile home park right across on the other side of Van Buren. All senior citizens, and they have a difficult time now getting out of the park onto land. This creates additional traffic hazard at that point, and they park on the street, which is almost just the butts right up to the fence line where these people's homes are. This makes it noisy. There are cars that come and go even now, that create a lot of noise, a lot of gas fumes, and a lot of trash that's being thrown out on the street from people that park there and then leave. So, we're asking that this is denied because of several other reasons.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I ask the, the speaker a question, please? Do you object to another kind of business going in there? It's just a restaurant use that you object to?
No, we don't object to the two. They have a beauty salon now, a barber shop, and I believe a tax service. And there's not a lot of problems, because these people that come to use those services don't usually spend much time there. So there's not off-site parking is no problem.
So your concern is that a restaurant use would create excessive parking challenges?
On the street, as well as in the parking facility.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, please approach the microphone. Sir, you're, oh, I'm sorry. Are you speaking also?
I...
You're up, you're up next. You're, you were there.
I would just like to be known that I am totally against this variance.
Name and address, please.
My address, three...
Name and address.
Charlene Railsback, Three Arcade Circle. I live at Desert Mobile Home Park. I am directly across from this business, the back end of my mobile home, and sets it, has been, since they worked on it to turn it into this, it has been noisy, dusty. They park right behind my trailer. I believe it's the help that does this. In the summertime, they let the cars run to cool it off. The fumes are coming into my trailer. The noise, I am disabled. The noise is very disturbing. I move there for the quiet and the peace. And since I've been there, because of this biz, building, and any type of business in there, I am totally against. It has disturbed me and sent me to psychiatry.
Thank you. Sir, name for the...
Yes, my name's Max Railsback. I live at Three Arcade Circle. And my house, or our house, is directly across from this entrance and exit. We're right there. Now, at seven o'clock in the morning, there's people opening doors and closing doors, and slamming doors and talking, and, and it's, goes on and, on until each nine o'clock at night, sometimes later than that. I don't approve of this. The traffic that goes through there is just constant. They're not there very long to get anything accomplished, as far as doing anything. And, and, you know, they've, they've had two insurance companies there in the space that he's talking about. There, there's been a, right now, there's a tax ins, a place there, they do their taxes, which is a seasonal thing, which will be over with probably in another thirty days. And consequently, there's a nail salon that's, I don't even know whether it's open or not. The only thing that's supporting this business is the hair salon. And if I'm not mistaken, I think the guy that owns this property is his wife who owns the hair salon, but I'm not sure about that. But that's the only thing that's supporting this property. Now, he wants to come in with a five-hundred-square-foot restaurant. He doesn't want the parking, that's because he's gonna just run them through round and round in circles, and every one of them's gonna come in and go out, right behind my master bedroom. And I got a little Pomeranian, it's just, used to be a real calm, easy-going dog, and now he's, he's going nuts because of the noise. It's constantly pounding on the, the back of the trailer. And there's a number of, like my wife said, there's a number of elderly people who live on that street, I think it's Van Buren. And that street has got cars parked from the stop sign, clear back about eight or nine car lengths. They work on the other side of the street. So consequently, they come out and they go, this, it's just disturbing the whole area. So consequently, I'd, I'd just soon this be denied.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Because it's, it's just too much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add one more thing.
Quickly.
That everything around there is residential. We have three huge apartment houses around there. There's also fourplexes. There's also private homes, and there's also this mobile home park. And we feel that it's too cluttered to have a lot of in-and-out traffic.
Thank you very much.
That would be, appreciate your consideration.
Anyone else wishing to speak on the matter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm here in behalf of my parents. We have the residence right next door to the restaurant, and...
Name, please, for the record, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Your name for the record.
Mary the Cruz. And on behalf of my parents, I'm here.
Thank you.
Um, they have the residence right next to the business, and the building is so small, they already have like three businesses inside of the building. I don't know how they're gonna have the fourth. And there's a lot of lawyering, the trafficking is always blocking their driveway all the time. There's like trash all over, all over the floor, like it is thrown over the wall into the residence. We've had trees, they're cutting the trees, and the branches are falling into the yard. We've already had, my mom's that has a guest house. We've had a broken window already in the back, from people throwing stuff over. And, you know, they're retired now, they just like to have some peace and quiet. And there is, also, there's three businesses, they wanna have a fourth one. Well, there's no room for parking at all, it's so small over there. And at nighttime, I don't know if it's like legalized or whatever, but they have like a food cart or something out in the parkway. They sell food at night, but it's like off a cart or something.
Okay.
Also in the parking lot.
Thank, thank you very much for your input. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. The applicant mentioned that this was just gonna be pretty much of an in-and-out thing. But on the floor plan that I see right before us, I see a whole bunch of tables there. Could you explain that, please?
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the hearing closed, and leave it to the applicant to answer the question regarding the, the table arrangements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Like I was saying before, this is five hundred square feet, plus the refrigerator that is gonna be in, in, in there, and the counter and everything. We have a hundred and ninety square feet of public area, just to get in, get the donuts, and leave. As you see in the picture, like the neighbor was mentioning, about trash, you can see in the pictures that this building and the, the outside, the parking, is extremely, extremely clean. There is, yeah, as you can see, it's very clean, there is no trash whatsoever. We have mature trees in the back for noise. I don't know what kinda noise they, they, they are talking about. The traffic is, is the same. This one is by appointment. I have never seen more than five cars into the property. They, they, they don't even use the whole sixteen spaces that they are there. As you can see, it's empty. And that picture, because of the sun, this one was, been taken probably like three o'clock in the afternoon. I mean, the cars that they park outside, they are no part of this proj, this building, because otherwise, they will be inside, it will be safety to have it inside. As you can see, there is no cars. The uses, they are, they're very minimum, with low impact, and we are not asking for a, for a zone change. The, the, the zone is already in place, and what we are asking is for a variance. Nobody complained about the variance for the parking. We have these two spaces. This is the back of the property, that picture that you're seeing there. And, and this is two more spaces, so we have eighteen spaces. But really, we don't need that many, because nobody parks there. The trash that they are throwing, I don't know what they're talking about, because we don't have any kinda thing to throw in the other side, because this use is just a hair salon. And, like, you can see, the parking is empty. The business is really, is really slow right now for a hair salon. The taxes, as you know, it goes just until April. And the traffic is minimum in this area. And, like you can see, it's extremely clean. My, my client is being, making sure, because his wife is the one that cuts the hair, is making sure that the, the place looks sharp. And as you can see, in that area, in that neighborhood, there is a lot of trash, there is a lot, I mean, there is a lot of repossessed homes. This is the only thing that is nice around there. You can see, there is no, any trash, no, nothing that looks bad. Looks very sharp, this place. And the, the donuts... And the, the donut shop, it won't have any impact in, in, in the surrounding areas. So with all your respect, I mean, we ask you for the approval of this project because we are just asking for a, for a donut shop. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed, and I'll turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
So, Mr. Ayala, you say it's gonna be a donut shop. What are your hours of operation gonna be?
Oh, yes, in, in, in the morning, like from eight o'clock to, you know, donuts they just sell in the morning. And, and they sell in the afternoon, like probably until eight o'clock. It's gonna close at eight o'clock.
Eight AM to eight PM?
Yeah, basically, but you know.
And your, and your main, main product, although, although we're here to talk about parking, I understand the, what the, what the request is, but you're saying from eight to eight, you're selling donuts and that's it?
That's it.
Walk in, get your pack of donuts, and walk out.
That's right. It's very simple, and the reason being is because it's very hard for my client to make the payment. You, you, you have seen the building, he put a lot of money into, into this project, and it's very hard just to make the payment of the mortgage of this, this place. But he, but it's very, very nice around that, that, the, around that place is one of the nicest place there. So I, I ask you for the approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes. I appreciate the fact that you've put development in that area of town, but for whatever reason, you've got 54 late protests from the people who are most affected by this. And that concerns me because I, I don't know to what extent you've reached out to the people who are literally just a stone's throw from this. The issue that we're dealing with is parking. The city's analysis is that the parking is deficient and fairly deficient, and that it would create problems for the surrounding neighborhood and traffic flows. But you bring another issue to my mind, and that is, you indicate that it's gonna be a donut shop. Well, I don't know of any donut shop that opens at eight AM. There, it's usually six AM or prior because people get the donuts to take to the office, et cetera. And if you're making donuts, I'm a little concerned that the smells of the cooking oils would waffle into the people who live right near there, so.
There is no any preparation, Commissioner. There is no, they, they bring the donuts there because it's so small that they just bring the donuts and wherever they sell in the morning.
So they're not being prepared there?
They don't prepare anything there. There is no even room to prepare. We are just selling it. And actually, they are no complaint, nobody's complaining about the parking because nobody parks there. It's, it's empty, the place is empty. And what they are complaining is about the parking on the street. I don't have control on, on the street, but the ones that they park on the street, obviously, they are no, from, from this, they don't come to this building for any services or, or, to do anything inside because otherwise, they will get in there because it's a lot safe, safer to have the car inside than to leave it on the street. But because they are not doing any, they're, they're not conducting any business into the building, they, they don't belong to us, and we don't have control on traffic. Traffic is come and goes, it's not because this building, because the business is very slow, and they are by appointment, like I told you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there, is there like a food cart or like a construction road wagon or something like that sitting there?
We don't have control on that. They, somebody's just parked there and sell, but it's not, it's not my client's car or he's not selling.
But he's not policing it? So your client's just kinda turning the other way?
No, he is telling him, no, he is telling him not to park there.
That lets this guy, somebody park a food wagon there, and that, that impact, I mean, that isn't, I mean, I understand you've got zoning for your building, but.
Right.
You know, a, a food cart or anything like that?
The food cart parks over here out of our premises. So we cannot say, we cannot tell them nothing. We can call public response and tell them not to be there. That's all we can do. But that, that car doesn't have nothing to do with us.
But if it's on your property?
No, it's outside of the premises because he has telling him to move that car, but you know, they leave. At eight o'clock, everybody leaves, and if they come and they sell something by the, by the property line, it's not our fault, but I, I will make sure that public response knows.
It's not your fault, but, one second, it's not your fault, but you have a, in essence, a spot use in the middle of this residential area, which the city has approved.
Right.
I mean, your zoning's fine, but I, I can see by the pictures, you maintain the, the property, but you have neighbors that have been, I mean, these are not neighbors sitting here going, you know, we just don't like this. They've, they've documented pretty specific issues that, that happened, late at night, the food wagon, things like that.
But we still have control.
But if you put in use, if we allow the parking to be reduced, and there's further impact due to the intensity of any use you put there, where is that parking gonna go? Where are those problems gonna go? They're gonna, they're gonna be these neighbors' problems.
Well, you, you, you can give me a, a, you know, like, make it as a condition for one year and we can review this.
No, I mean, why would we do that? Because in one year from now, you'll be down here telling us the world's wonderful and the neighbors are just cranky. I mean, this is a neighborhood that, quite honestly, the mobile home park seemed well-maintained from what we've seen. The residents around there are well-maintained. This is an area that, that could easily become in greater transition. So why would we reduce our standards and let that potential impact detract from the quality of the neighborhood? This is one I don't, I typically can see, you know, an agreement here, but things like food wagon parking there, I've, you know, that's, that's a horrible deal.
It's out of, out of control.
Your donut delivery's gonna be a bigger truck there that isn't.
No, they have a van, and it will be parked in the back of this property where we put the other two parkings, and honestly, this is not.
And that's if they make it, and then there'll be another restaurant behind it, it'll be a taqueria, it'll be something else behind it.
No, because it's not a roof to prepare food.
Whatever will fit because of the shortage of parking. I, I think you have a nice.
And we don't have the zone to have that.
I know, you have a nice building now, your client seems to maintain it, but I don't wanna create that tipping point of, takes this project that functions to where it becomes a burden on the neighbors that seem to be pretty straightforward about their impacts. So, yeah, I would, I would've thought before this item would've come forward, if there were issues with the neighbors.
Yes.
You would've reached out, or your client would've reached out and.
I didn't know that was.
Solve that, so, but.
Commissioner, if you want us to, we can hold it so I can talk with the neighbors and we can, we come to any arrangement because.
Mr. Ayala, one moment, please. Let the commi, let the commissioner finish talking, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then, and then you speak with him instead of cutting him off.
I appreciate the help on chairing the meeting, but I think we have to recognize Commissioner Quinn.
I just wanna say something very briefly that my friend and cohort, Commissioner Evans, said, I've sat on this commission just under a year, and I have never seen 54 neighbors ever come out and not want something in their neighborhood. And we, as an entity, have to address them because they took the time to put a lot of, lot of time into mailing these things back, and we got 54 of them, not five, 54. You will not see my support tonight simply because this neighborhood does not want it, simply.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans, you have the motion?
I just do, if I may, just on the record, just real quickly.
All right, here we go.
The additional parking spaces that have been proposed do not meet city standards, therefore they cannot count as parking spaces. With regard to the current application, and as I read the site plan, it says restaurant donut shop, and then there's a set portion, X amount of square feet, I believe it's 300 maybe. It says restaurant equipment, and then it discusses the equipment area. The application before you is for some sort of food preparation on site, and that's why it is a restaurant use. If indeed packaged goods are simply being delivered here and sold here, then it's a retail use, and it's an entirely different application. The application before you is for a restaurant with restaurant equipment and food preparation on site.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Wheeler, one quick question. Based on the plan that's submitted to us, it shows outside dining tables. Doesn't outside dining require additional parking? At least the photo, I mean, the, the application here.
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman, through, in the, in your backup, the actual floor plan that you're referring to was revised and the elimination of outdoor seating is, while that's no longer depicted.
Okay, I'm just going by the picture we have here, but.
In your backup, you have the March 12th, which eliminates those.
I, I think there's pretty sufficient evidence here, and Ms. Wheeler, you bring up an, an additional issue. If in fact it's a, a retail reuse, there would likely be issues early in the morning or late in the evening of trucks making deliveries, and I think that too creates a burden for the surrounding area. I think the evidence is, is fairly overwhelming at this point. There are many uses that could work there, in my opinion, and meet the code, meet all of Title 19's requirements. But I do think that there's a lot of deference to be paid to those most impacted by the matter, and my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff for denial of the variance 32873.
Motion's on the floor. Those in favor?
Yay.
Say yay.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Hearing none, the motion for denial carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Okay, and we're gonna now take about a five-minute break while staff tries to reboot the, the electronic communication stuff.
We need the ray guide somewhere.
Thank you. Just five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Oh, thank you. Number 25.
I swear by God, don't you like the donuts here right now?
They're the best, though.
With the big sign that says donut.
Here's what it is, nothing.
Don, don friends, father, whatever. Donut. I'm required to go there.
The chairman's gonna call your item forward so you can make that request.
Thank you.
Your powers are limited, but they make people happy occasionally.
The ones up here should still be logged in. They should be logged in, and I'll go see if they get their. Over here, I'll show you. See, there's one under here, which is the one I turned on originally and thought that, thought that something must've, must've gone wrong. There's also one under here, just this little thing, and that's the one that feeds that monitor. And so that must also be the one with the voting system. So, let's see if we can bring that up. Okay, you just need to.
Well, if you had a reset to shut down and restart, we probably hit shut down instead of restarting. It's not a, that shouldn't have been a good idea. We had known.
It was a good shot. It's our.
Exactly.
I'm trying to see where...
Now, this is a neighborhood law. We'll be starting again in about a minute.
It's in, uh, close.
Thank you. I'd like to reconvene the meeting now, and we will continue with our voice vote technology. Seems to have been working for about the last 200 years, so we'll continue with that. I'd like to jump ahead to item number 22. And I will read the title and then make a motion that the item be held in abeyance at the request of the applicants. The item is the Vacation 3172. The applicant is Forest City Commercial Development, Inc. Owner is Livework LLC et al. Petition to vacate an 80-foot wide portion of the first street between Bonneville Avenue and Gracius Avenue. Item number 22, a request has been made to hold in abeyance, and that would be my motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, is that... Will that still be scheduled for the same city council hearing and then the next planning commission hearing?
Staff will get back to you.
It's a secret.
I cannot make this commitment at this time. We'll have to look at it.
We do not know at this point.
Okay. Well, I mean, can I just say, is the public hearing closed? Because I would like to just make one comment.
It wasn't even open.
This happened kind of strangely. Because I don't even... Did you make any motion as to how long the meeting would be postponed or the item would be obeyed?
No, we just...
Held it to the next meeting?
Hold it to the next meeting.
So it is held to the next planning commission meeting?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's what had been requested, so that's what we thought we were doing.
To the next... Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Now, go to item number 14, which is SUP 32748. The applicant is MV Spa. The owner is North Shore Plaza LLC. Is for proposed massage establishment with waivers to allow for the massage establishment to remain open at 11:00 PM, where 9:00 PM is the latest allowed, and a zero-foot distance separation to a residential use where 400 feet is required at 8370 West Cheyenne Avenue, Suite 101. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds that the use is too intense for this location as represented by the waivers and recommends denial. Please note, we have received additional protests since the closing of the agenda item.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the item, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed. The applicant is not being represented either, so I'll turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Motion's been made. Please cast your... Or please indicate support for the motion by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Signify by saying no. Motion carries unanimously, 6-0, denial.
That is final action unless appealed, and we will notify the applicant of that action.
We now move to item number 15. And companion item number 16. Item number 15 is Special Use Permit 33189. The applicant is Big Mama's Cooking or Kitchen, Inc. Owner is Bud Holdings LLC for a supper club in an existing 4,091 square foot restaurant at 2230 West Bonanza Road. Item number 16 is Site Development Review 33191 for on-site alterations for an existing 4,091 square foot restaurant. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the proposed use to be compatible with the surrounding land uses in the area and the current zoning of C1, and recommends approval. In regards to the site plan review, these are minor alterations, and staff finds them in compliance with Title 19 and also recommends approval. Please note, we did receive additional support letter after posting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Bart Anderson, Public Works. I would like to recommend that on Agenda Item Number 16, Condition Number 17 be deleted.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance who wish to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone, give your name and address for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have?
Demetrius McWhorter, 2230 West Bonanza. Dargo McWhorter, 2230 West Bonanza, were the owners. We are here to answer any questions. We're willing to follow all of staff's recommendations.
Including the deletion of item number 17... Or condition number 17?
Especially.
And if I may, conditions 6 through 8 should be eliminated also.
Yes.
You're on the run here. Anything else you'd like?
There was just one issue was, would these items be... I believe one was on a one-year review and one was on a two-year review. I think we requested that they both be on a two-year review.
Director Reeder?
That would be on the special use permit. It's an existing building, and the standard condition there would be a one-year extension of time, but a two-year can be granted.
So that would be a change in number three for two instead of one?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Anyone else in attendance who wish to speak on this matter, please approach?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. On the site development plan, I just want to make sure that the landscaping's nice because the rental company across the street had just been dumping tons of money into fixing up their landscaping and also that rock place has fixed up their landscaping. And I... You know, all I see is a bunch of green. I don't know what's there. But I would certainly hope that the applicant continues the nice landscaping that's being done on this street.
Yes, sir.
Can I respond to that?
Please do.
Absolutely. We plan to enhance the landscaping substantially, equivalent to Ahern or even better.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion. And I'd like to congratulate you on your commitment to upgrading the landscaping and continuing to revitalize that area of the city. It's much improved, and it's certainly moving in the right direction, and it's partially because of you folks and your business, so thank you.
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval. Just want to put on the record that I did make a site visit out there last week and spoke with the wife. If we could, go ahead and amend condition number three to a two-year. And with that...
Yes, two?
With that, I'll make approval for item 15.
Okay, motion's been made. Those in support of the recommendation for approval indicate so by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries 5-0... Or 6-0. Thank you very much.
Goes to council May 6th.
That was for item 15. What about number 60?
The applicant have a question?
It was for Director Wheeler. Was it possible for us to stay on the same city council agenda as our previous one because we had to obey for some internal issues that had to be worked out between planning and...
What is... I'm sorry, what other application?
What other application?
Can this stay on the same city council agenda that we would have been on two weeks ago because this had to be obeyed?
Well, this will go to city council on May the 6th.
Is there a sooner one than is possible?
No, there's not.
Okay, all right.
I'll make approval for item 16, SDR 33191, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Motion has been made. Indicate your support by saying aye.
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 Your opposition by saying no. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you.
And although I gave up my favorite dish up there for Lent, right after April, I'll be right there again.
Thank you all, thank you.
We now move to item number 17, which is zoning 33240. The applicant owner is Dean Hardy and Lena Kalm et al. from a R1 single-family residential to PR professional office and parking at 610 South 9th Street. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the existing mixed-use general plan designation and existing professional office and parking zoning districts to the east and west, as well as will bring the site's existing use into conformance with the general plan in Title 19. As such, staff recommends approval of this application. Please note, additional letters of support have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open now. Anyone who wish to speak, please approach the microphone, give your name for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Wayne Hardy. My address... My business address is 610 South 9th Street, which is the address of the property that's on the agenda item. We agree with the condition of approval that's been recommended by staff, and I also wanted to add, I really appreciated all of the courtesy and cooperation that I received from staff as we went through this process. I had questions, and they were very helpful and a lot of assistance to me, and I am grateful for that.
Thank you. We always like to hear that. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we clear the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I...
Recognize Commissioner Evans?
Thank you. Mr. Hardy, the law office is, I think, probably one of the better of the developments in the area, exactly what we want. Fairly residential in character. They've been a good neighbor. As I understand this matter, it's simply a cleanup. The application, the zoning application, brings it into conformance for what they've essentially been doing for 20 years. It's consistent with the general plan designation, and it would be my pleasure, unless there's discussion, to follow the recommendation of the staff for approval of this. Commissioner, did you want to say something?
Side with your motion, I believe.
Thank you. My motion would be for approval of bringing this into conformance following the recommendation of the staff.
Motion's been made. Please indicate your support for the motion by saying aye.
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 Opposition by saying no. Motion to carry... Carries seven... Or 6-0. Thank you.
And that goes to council on May 6th.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 18, which is variance 33369. The applicant owner is Marcia Giles for a proposed 4,875 square foot accessory structure, Class 2, where 1,325 square feet is the maximum size allowed to allow for the proposed accessory structure, Class 2, not to be aesthetically compatible metal with the principal dwelling unit, and to allow the proposed accessory structure, Class 2, to be 24 feet in height where a height of 18 feet is permitted at 5921 Mellow Avenue. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the variance is preferential in nature as the applicant has chosen to propose an accessory structure that exceeds the allowable square footage by 3,550 square feet, as well as the height of the main building by six feet, and is not aesthetically compatible with the principal dwelling. As such, the hardship is self-imposed, and staff is recommending denial. Please note, additional letters of protest have been received after the publishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wish to speak on the item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record for the applicant we have.
This is Marcia Giles, 5921 Mellow. I am the homeowner.
Thank you.
I know that there are some questions and concerns about the building I'm wanting to build. I'd like to address those.
Please.
One of those is, in the staff report, it mentioned corrugated metal several times. When I think corrugated metal, the first thing I think of is a silver tinny-looking building. That is not what I'm planning. I'm planning a steel, commercial-grade building. Over here, I've attached some color samples. I'm looking at either the light Sahara or the Sahara tan, so it is compatible with my primary residence there. I'm looking for something that's nicely colored. On the backside of this, if I may turn it over, it would be this top grating here, so there is some texture to it. It is not a flat steel, nor is it a... The ripple that we normally think of as corrugated metal. I've asked for a variance in height. I have two fifth wheels back there, some of the supporting documentation photos that you've already taken show my fifth wheels. I haven't seen the photo pop up yet on here, but those are visible currently from my front gate. I've had no choice but to park them there due to some vandalism coming over the wall and breaking windows on the west side of my property. You can now see them, the two trailers peeking out from my gate. This will completely eliminate any potential eyesore to my immediate neighbors, since they would now all be self-contained in an enclosed building. In that building, I want to have trailer parking that's a pull-through area, so I can pull the two rigs in, unhitch them, pull the truck out the other side. That's why there's a dual roll-up door. I also want to take some of that area, turn it into a two-stall barn. I'm well within my zoning on two horses there. I'd like to be able to bring my horse back home. And the last of the area is going to be an exercise workout area. I'm putting a swamp cooler in there so the horses don't get over hot, and I don't overheat when I try to work out during the summer in a metal box. I've asked for the height because trailers are tall. That's why I'm asking for a 14-foot roll-up. By the time I do the additional can on top to hold the door, I'm into a fairly good height. I do not believe this is going to be visible from my street, since I have it tucked back behind my house. It's not going to be, where we're looking right now, you're not going to see anything beyond the brick wall that's already in existence. So I'm looking to really clean up the back area of my house and make it much more attractive to my neighbors. I walked my neighborhood over the last couple of weeks and I have a mini petition here, where the vast, vast majority of my immediate neighbors have signed off. Those who didn't, I couldn't reach, whether the house is in foreclosure. I had one gentleman on my street die a week and a half ago. A little hard to get a signature. But all of my immediate neighbors have signed off. I know that two of the postcards that came in, one is about a half mile away in a gated community. My understanding when that community was approved was that there were going to be two-story homes between him and myself. The view potential blockage would no longer be a concern in my mind, plus the fact that I want to plant trees along the west and south wall to help shield the building. That way it'll be even less of an eye view to people behind me. The other protest card, I'm a little puzzled on. He is not only across the two fifteen, but they're across the ninety-five when I do a map quest to their address. So, I found that rather interesting. He turned in an opposing. Any other questions for me?
No, we'll wait and see for a second though. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
One quick question. You running any electrical business out of your house?
I have some electrical stuff stored back there right now, but no, I am not an electrician, nor do I have any intentions of being an electrician. I'm an accountant by trade.
Just reading what one of the protests said, please do not allow this zoning change. This building is intended to be used as a warehouse for a commercial electrician. Please keep our neighborhood residential. And the electrical contractor is running his business from this location. Check the backyard, the contents, and see for yourself.
No, I am not an electrician. I am not running an electrical company from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do you have the support of the neighbors on either side of you?
Yes, I do.
Do you have your petition would?
Leave it with the clerk tonight. Yes, they're right here. And I will be happy to.
Mr. Chairman?
Please, recognize Commissioner Evans?
Part of my concern, other than the fact that it's so large, it's almost five thousand square feet, is the aesthetic design. In very few cases, I've seen where people, for whatever reason, want to store their RVs and their boats and whatever in an accessory structure. But it's pretty uncommon that it would be that large. But when they are, they've found ways to build it in such a way that it basically blends in with the character and the architecture of the house. Otherwise, it looks like a metal shed, a commercial body shop, something of that nature. I don't know how visible it will be. You said it won't be visible from the street, but I'm assuming it will be visible from somewhere, especially at that height and that size. And it's, you're attempting to put almost a five thousand square foot commercial-looking structure on a residentially-zoned property. And I find that challenging at best.
I can certainly understand that concern. I wanted to go with a building that would not decay over the next ten or so years. I've chosen a steel manufacturer whose buildings are warranted for twenty years and has several steel buildings here in town that have been erected. I wanted something that would last and improve the value of my property. I've been there eleven years. I have no intentions of selling anytime soon.
I understand, but you're, what you've shown us is a steel square box, which has a warehouse-looking feel to it. What I'm suggesting is that when I've seen these approved, it's generally where they've used a stucco material and they've mirrored the architecture of the home. And in many cases, they've hired an architecture to create what, from a distance, would look like a very large residential structure, not a tin shed. So, I, you're, this is problematic, I think, at best.
Okay, part of the reason I've gone with this deal is economics. I'm already proposing a building that I'm expecting to spend about a hundred and twenty-five thousand to build. If I go to stucco, I've significantly increased that cost and put it back out of reach for several more years.
Mr. Chairman, how many acres is your lot here?
It's currently one point oh five acres.
One point, so it's just over an acre, one point oh five?
That's correct.
And how large is your home?
Two thousand six hundred and fifty feet.
Alright, and then you have a pool in the back, and then you want to build this structure there to house your RVs, put a couple of horses in, and a workout area?
That's correct.
Okay. And you, all the neighbors on all four, on all four sides, are they all acceptable to your plan here?
As far as I have been able to determine, without going into the gated community, yes.
Which side is the gated community on?
The gated community is in the southwest corner. Currently, the lots immediately behind me are not built.
Did you hold any type of neighborhood meeting? Did you offer a meeting to talk to the neighbors about it?
I did walk my neighborhood and Councilman Ross asked me today if I would hold a neighborhood meeting. Absolutely agreeable to doing that.
That's probably what we should do. My suggestion, if you're willing to do a neighborhood meeting, then my suggestion would be, well, let's hold that meeting and let's hear what the neighbors have to say, and then you address their concerns. And then once you hold that meeting, come back to us again and let's hear what the neighbors had to say.
If that's, if that's what the commission would like, I'm more than willing to do that.
Yeah, and, yeah, okay, great. Well, W ma'am recommendation is that we obey this for, to the next meeting, to let her have a neighborhood meeting.
When is the next meeting?
If I may, in order to send out the notices, it would have to be a thirty-day abeyance, otherwise we wouldn't have time to give adequate notice of a meeting.
Which would make it difficult to hit the May sixth planning, or the council meeting, I assume?
You will not hit the May sixth if we obey even once.
Understood.
Bottom line is it puts it out about thirty days. Are you comfortable with that?
I would have liked to have had it built during the summer, but if I need to wait another thirty days for the approval, I'll wait thirty days and convince my neighbors it's a good deal.
Let's do that.
I'm not worried about convincing.
That gives, I think it gives us a greater comfort. If you heard Commissioner Evans and his concerns, let's do that. So that'd be my motion.
Okay, motion has been made. Those in support of that motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
And that would be, I'm sorry, that would be obeyed till April twenty-third.
So it's six oh for the abeyance?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may, when you have that meeting, would you let me know about that? I'd be more than happy to attend.
I will certainly make sure you're aware of it. Thank you.
If you could contact staff and we'll direct you how to get that meeting set up.
Great, thank you.
We now move to item number nineteen and companion item twenty. Item nineteen is special use permit thirty-two, one seventy-one. The applicant is Francisco Lara. The owner is the Seventh Street Property LLC. Is for proposed tavern limited establishment at one-one-five North Seventh Street. Item number twenty is site development review thirty-three, four twenty-six. For proposed tavern limited establishment in an existing two-story, seven thousand six hundred and thirty-two square foot building with a six thousand one hundred and sixty square foot commercial recreation amusement facility outdoor. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, staff finds the proposed use to be compatible with the entertainment district and is recommending approval. Please note, we are recommending a change to condition number three to read two years instead of one. In regards to item number twenty, as conditioned, the project will meet Title nineteen standards. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak, should approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. On behalf of the applicant, we have?
Frank Keelam. I'm the owner of the properties, manager of the LLC.
Thank you, sir. You have the recommendation for approval from staff. Do you agree with the conditions as amended?
We agree with the conditions. The, we'd like to clarify item five and item six on the SDR. Those, our understanding is that those will be obeyed as in, on the paragraph fourteen, where we will sign a covenant.
Staff response, please.
Five and six, sir?
Yes, item five and six on the staff recommendations will be obeyed until such time as the rest of the street is?
This is onsite. Five and six refer to private property, not public property.
Well, there is no landscaping on the, on the private property.
That's correct. I believe that's correct and those can be eliminated. Mr. Rankin, yes?
That is correct.
It has nothing to do with obeying it or bonding or any of that.
Okay, so then item five and six will be deleted.
And how are we doing with fourteen?
Fourteen, we concur with that.
You concur with fourteen?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please give your name for the record.
Lauren Sangram, one fifty Las Vegas Boulevard. I was curious to know what the outdoor recreation facility is?
Thank you. That's a, any, just let me go ahead and go through it and we'll answer your question. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and ask for an explanation as to what is the outdoor recreation area?
Location for concerts?
Mr. Chairman, that's the stage area on the, on the north side of the property. It's a stage with a listening viewing area.
If I may, I'm, excuse me, if I may, we'll be able to explain that a little more thorough. My name is Miguel Gutierrez, Collar Architecture Project Manager, six-twenty Brush Street, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-oh-seven. What the outdoor entertainment venue is, we want to follow the, and we want to take advantage of offering outdoor entertainment, taking advantage of our climate and being able to offer an outdoor concert, such as different nightclubs do, like Pure Nightclub, has an outdoor entertainment venue, which you could sit outside, enjoy your music, and be able to sit outdoors and enjoy.
Is there any intent on days of operation or hours of operation of the outdoor activities?
Yes. We want to follow the nightclub standards, usually start after eight and finish at three to four in the morning. Since this is in the entertainment district, that we already talked to different people to see if there was going to be any problems or issues, and there's going to be no problems and issues, I believe.
Mr. Chairman, I, just a question. I, in concept, I understand the entertainment district and what we want there. And I don't think I would have any objection to some sort of an outdoor stage for specific events, particularly as the weather permits. But when you're talking about three AM, I'm curious about the streamlined towers that is really a stone's throw from there. And then I'm seeing a lot of residential properties over on the other side of Stewart, not far from, from this venue. In the nightclub that's self-contained, I would think the ambient noise wouldn't be so much that it would keep people up. But I'm a little concerned if you're having an outdoor concert at three AM, you're still within, from what I can see, earshot of a number of single-family residential properties, as well as some brand-new high-rises that they're doing everything they can to fill. I don't think, if the noise thing would be, that would be something I want to know about. I, and the reason I ask, I once lived on the fifth floor of a high-rise that had a nightclub down below, and I can tell you, I never got to sleep before three AM when they closed the place up. So, can you address those issues and do my colleagues have any of the similar concerns?
My name is Francisco Lara, twenty-seven, twenty-eight of Pasquale, Las Vegas Boulevard. To answer that question, what we're trying to do is to bring the different ambience of Mexico, bringing in different kind of concerts, which include dance also. And we've been told that we, since we have in the district, the community, it would be no problem for the noise. But if you want, you have any problem with the times that we're going to be working, we can be able to finish everything up at two o'clock, if that's one of the concerns. I know, I know it's. No, that'd be it. If you want to talk?
The, the other thing is, in the entertainment district, we have several other venues down there that do outside entertainment, one being the Beauty Bar. And my understanding is that the noise ordinance has been, there is no noise ordinance in the district.
Have you, have you talked to the, I guess you're next door to the El Cortez?
Yes. Mr. Lara was at two of our owners' association meetings, described what he was going to do and had full approval of everybody at the meeting. There was no dissent.
I'm, I'm just wondering, oh, I'm sorry, you not close the public hearing. My thought was just off the top, in theory, I absolutely am supportive of, of the efforts, but I don't know whether the, the conditions would allow for a review period. And my thought was that if this becomes problematic, that we'd have an opportunity to review the matter a few years down the road.
It'd be pretty hard to review it after he's built the facility and I, I think that would probably be a problem.
Well, I'm concerned about people living in a high-rise that have?
There's nobody living in a high-rise.
Well, we'll never get anybody living there.
At Streamline? At Streamline?
Yes, I do.
I'm sorry.
I mean, the reason I ask about El Cortez, I mean, they're an active part of the entertainment district, and I know they've spent a small fortune redoing the Cabana Suites.
Right.
Which are?
Mike Nolan is the president of our association and not only approves of it, but has offered him the use of his parking lot, the parking garage at the corner of Ogden and Seventh.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Thank you. I met with Mr. Keelam yesterday down at the, at the building. It was quite interesting because I had called him within a twenty-minute timeframe and he came down and he actually opened the door up and let me walk through the building. So, it's a two-story building. One of my concerns was, is, is, it was the seven AM, seven PM to seven AM timeframe. But from what it was explained to me, the outdoor area will be enclosed with a ten-foot block wall. And it will have a concrete stamped dance floor and folks will host parties in there. Now, the interior of the building, which was about, what, about six thousand square feet, had a, had already had a bar in there and a stage. And so, what I gathered was there's going to be partying inside and outside. And they will be charging to come in. And you can party from seven PM, I guess, until the band finishes playing, all the way up to seven AM on, on a good party night. And that was some of my concerns, was number one, noise. I did ask him about the garage, which he said he had talked with the El Cortez folks and they have permission. But one of my, also, this building abuts a motel. So, and, and across the alley is a motel. And one of my concerns was, how is that alley going to be used? Is it going to be used for a back entrance in the club? Is it going to be used because, you know, things happens in alleys late at night?
Actually, the alleyway is going to be our loading, unloading zone early on. That's where we're going to have our liquor deliveries, everything that's going to come in and out.
But my question is, do you have anything in writing from the El Cortez, from the, I believe that's a motel eight to the, would be to the south of you? And then also to the east of you is another motel there. Do you have anything from the owners or the manager, or the owners of those properties saying they're okay with it? Because I'm just thinking about disturbing the guests at two or three o'clock in the morning, as well as the residents that live in that area.
And that was one of the reasons why we went to the association meetings, to talk to all of the, all of the building owners around. And one of the, one of the issues with the sound, all of the buildings around the? And, uh, one of the, one of the issues with the sound, all of the buildings around the El Cortez are high buildings.
And they'll bounce sound off of each and every one of them?
A Streamline won't be affected because all of our sound is going to have to go through the parking garages. And it's a rather long, long distance away.
Sir, I, I owned the DJ business for fifteen years, and if I put some Carver amps on you, you, you'll hear it all the way down to the stratosphere. I, I got some cars in my neighborhood, you can hear from, from my house to the stratosphere. And those, and some of them not even SUVs. And so, my concern is with, is with the, with the sound. I think the concept is great because it fits in that area. That's an entertainment district. But I'm looking at the sound and the, and the times of operation. Now, seven AM, seven PM to seven AM, that, that's a party.
A very good party.
Yes.
I, I thought it was seven to three, yeah.
Uh, in the notes that I read, it said seven PM, seven PM to seven AM, in the, in the, in the backup notes I had.
The idea, the idea was that for a big concert, sometimes, you know, the people got there like, uh, like in, uh, ten o'clock to two o'clock. After the two o'clock, we're going to close the doors, like we go, for the access to, at the outside. And the, if the people, they want to stay longer, they're going to be able to stay, but in the, the enclosed area, where the bar is right now, the, the one that you see yesterday, is going to be shared right there. Uh, I mean, the music's going to be loud, but it's not going to be allowed to go somewhere else besides that time.
Am I hearing you say you're going to close down the outside area at two?
The, the party area, yeah.
The outside area at two?
Exactly, yes.
So, the music's only on the interior after two, uh, after two AM?
We can do that.
What if you have a crowd?
Because the crowd is going to be leaving. Most of the people, they don't stay. They normally go to the concert and stage, and then leave. As soon as they leave, we can close the doors, we can take the people, taking them out, and leave on the only one, the remaining ones who leave, be over there.
Do, let me ask you another question. How long have you been in this business? Um, just a couple of questions. Do you have another, uh, facility here in Las Vegas that you currently operate, that you're doing that?
Sure. Um, I've been doing work in like three years, it's going to be three years already. And I have a, a restaurant with a live entertainment at the commercial center.
In the commercial center on, on the county side of Sahara?
Mm-hmm.
What, what's your crowd average on a, on a Friday and Saturday, Saturday night?
It's three hundred, four hundred.
And the hours of operation there?
Between ten to seven o'clock in the morning. Actually, six.
So, you have patrons in up till six, six o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I would, uh, suggest perhaps an additional condition that we close down the outdoor, uh, music venue at two AM. As an additional condition someplace.
That would go on the SUP?
We'll concur with that. Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear that. Could you repeat that, please?
Uh, an additional condition on the SUP, that we close down the outdoor, uh, music venue at two AM?
Okay. So, roughly six thousand square feet, let's say you've got two hundred and fifty people in there, and you've got another, say, hundred, hundred and seventy-five out at a concert. Two o'clock, concert shuts down, everybody's breaking down. How many people can that building hold before you're violating the fire code?
I, I, if I understand, uh, it would not close down the outside venue, but close down the music from the outside. You could still have people outside.
But I thought the, the, the concert was going to be held outside. Pardon me?
The music would be shut down outside at two AM, but...
So, if you had live entertainment, they would be setting up inside or outside?
Inside.
And you're going to... Speakers outside in the courtyard area?
Yes. And what we do right now, when you asked me about the question, uh, about my other place, is that's why I need a bigger place. This one, it will be holding more than six hundred people, so according to us. So, that's why it should be, uh, what to, most of the people are going there. Right now, the, I would say, the capacity of the building itself, the one that we have right now, it would be like three hundred, so that's why.
Now, and then that goes back to the parking again. How, how many spaces does that? Because here, here you have this facility, you're going to attract up to what you say, three hundred, maybe six hundred people.
Okay.
But you're relying on a parking lot across the street that doesn't belong to you, but you have access to use it.
Parking garage.
Parking garage. Do you know how much it holds? Have you looked at? Uh, what if the El Cortez has a great night, and their parking lot's full with, with El Cortez folks? Or what if the owners of the El Cortez start to say they're now losing business because their own customers can't get in their own parking lot because they're all over at your place? You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
You start creating these dynamics down there, and, and I can tell you, uh, you know, I know how to party. And I've been to some seven PMs to seven AMs. And, um, it can, at seven, four, five, six o'clock in the morning, things can happen when people get liberated, and things can happen.
Yes.
So, how do you plan to handle that? You have security or, or what?
We are going to have, uh, plenty of onsite security. We want, we're going to keep our crowds under control, and we are going to keep a nice and clear environment. Um, the reason for which this venue is going to be of great, a great contribution to the downtown area is going to be that we, we want to attract a good crowd. There's a lot of people that can't go out, um, to enjoy. There's no decent place to enjoy good mariachi music or a good entertainment venue. Um, and we would like to reach out to those people that want to come out, decent people that aren't going to be well behaved. And we are going to have plenty of security so that you have a nice place to take your wife and enjoy Latin music, a night of salsa, here in town, for example. One of the, the parking issues, they were addressed, um, at the association meetings. We have talked to Neonopolis, we have talked to the people from the El Cortez, and there is plenty of off-site parking, which is going to be from walking distance. We're talking over, you could park over fifteen hundred cars within a three-block radius.
You have the big red garage, you've got Neonopolis, and this is what the city told us, is that there is plenty of parking.
I just want to, um, make a quick comment to gain my support. I believe and trust that you've talked to, uh, maybe Mr. Epstein over at the El Cortez and, and people at Neonopolis. But we have a gentleman standing right here who actually lives directly, um, affected by this. And I don't want you to think in any way, sir, that we're disrespecting your, um, comment, because I heard you loud and clear. And this project will not see my support, um, until I see in writing from all the people that you said that you spoke with, um, that support it. And once I see that, then I will reconsider my, my thoughts. But right now, um, I will not be supporting this project.
Thank you. Is the, did we close the public hearing?
Not yet.
Okay.
Godfather, two forty North Nineteenth Street. And, and this noise issue's got me too, because, you know, I go to bed at nine o'clock at night, and if I lived up there, I'd just, you know, mariachi music, you know. I'd just...
But you'd be up for the seven o'clock party time in the morning, right?
I'd be sitting there throwing bricks down at them. That's what I'd be doing.
One more shot, and that's all for you, sir. Go.
Yeah, I'm not sure if two AM on a, on a, on a weeknight is, is, is an acceptable solution. I mean, if they had some kind of plan and said, yes, we consider the people over in the high-rise, and this is, we intend on building this wall or something, you know, that may be acceptable for me, but I don't know, as I said, I spoke to, said I spoke to people in the neighborhood, but I know I was at the HOA meeting today, and that no one has, uh, mentioned that they, they had spoken to them, because I told them I was going to the meeting. So, um, if we, maybe we can at least know what the plan is.
Thank you.
The HOA meeting, where?
At Streamline Tower.
At Streamline, no.
The, one of the owners of the Streamline Towers is a member of our board, but, uh, we do not approach the HOA.
Okay. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter?
I'd like to make one quick comment. My name is Ron McMenamy, uh, three thirty East Warm Springs Road. I used to be the landlord of Francisco, and I'm the one who put Francisco in my building. Uh, it's a fourteen thousand square foot building, so it's twice the size of this building. And I too had concerns...
Where's that building located?
In, uh, nine fifty-three East Sahara, in the commercial center. I too had concerns with the, the, um, restaurant nightclub situation. Let me tell you something. He's one of the finest operators that I've ever seen. It's, uh, high-security, excellent crowd, the food is awesome, the entertainment is first-class. They took, they take great care of the property. Been one of the best tenants I've ever had. And I'm down here as a, and I became a good friend with Francisco, and that's where I go and eat Mexican food. There is the, plenty of parking downtown. We spend enough time visiting with economic development and planning and going through all the issues. They welcome more and more people in the parking garages. That's what they're there for. They're for revenue for the city. We've addressed all the issues, and everybody's been very, very supportive and helpful in getting this on. So, one of the best operators I've ever seen, so I'd like your approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
An addition on the security issue, uh, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Owners Association, and we, uh, contract with Fremont Street Experience for, in the evening, for their security. They come down and patrol the area also.
Mr. Chairman, I...
Let me, let me just do some procedural things here. Does anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and now turn it over to staff for questions, or planning commissioners for comments.
You know what? I, I appreciate what you're doing, but the more you guys talk, the, the greater level of discomfort I have. I know we want an entertainment district that's vibrant, and, and it sounds like your proposal is just that. I'm not concerned about the parking. I'm simply concerned about the fact that you're building an outdoor music venue, and you say you're going to have concerts until two in the morning. And the way I look at the map, there are motels, there are residential properties, and there is one of the largest high-rises a block away. Normally, we have studies about ambient noise everywhere else in the city. That's a, a major issue. Now, granted, the entertainment district is somewhat different, but you're not on Fremont, you're on Ogden. And the way I see it, you're going to have Latin and mariachi music until two AM, uh, blasting out there. There's no assurance that I have that there aren't dozens, if not maybe even hundreds of people who are impacted by that. I don't know why it's not been looked at. Um, if it's within the building, I could care less. I mean, the louder it is, the better. I don't think it would really carry through. But I can tell you, an outdoor stage with amplifiers and all the high-tech equipment, it's going to carry, and it's going to be a nuisance for anybody that lives around there and wants to go to sleep. All I've asked, and, and you don't seem to like the idea, is a period of review. It's a special use permit. It goes with the land. If we approve it, we approve it forever. If you want my vote, you need to have an opportunity to review to make sure that whatever is going in there isn't a problem. And there would be an ability to say, it doesn't work there. I'm sorry, gentlemen. But I also think that would give people a level of comfort, knowing, and you, on notice, that you can't, you know, make sure that it impacts hundreds, if not, you know, dozens of other people. That's all I'm asking, and you don't seem to like that idea. So, i- if, if that's the case, you won't get my vote.
Commissioner Evans, can I say one more thing?
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman?
Yeah, please respond.
I've been, I've been involved in the entertainment district for, for over five years now, trying to get that developed at the bequest of the city. The city came to us and said, we want to do this. We spent, uh, part of it my money, uh, part of it the city's, uh, over five million dollars on the streetscape down there. We spend, uh, I can't, a hundred and some thousand dollars, I think, a year on the maintenance, on the security, uh, for the district. In the last five years, since the initial, uh, opening of the first few clubs, we've been able to open one that was, uh, Don't Tell Mamas. This lease was signed with Mr. Lara six months ago. It's taken us six months to get to the point where we're at now. Every day that we're not open, uh, costs money, uh, not only from the landlord's point of view, but from, uh, income not made by the tenant. We've done everything that we were requested to do. We've had, uh, two of the meetings for the Board of Directors two months in a row, where every owner was invited to the meeting. And, and I don't believe you received any, uh...
Protest?
Protest. I don't know what else I can say.
I will, uh, maybe sum it up, and I think everyone's had a shot at it with me, but I, uh, I encourage the development downtown in the entertainment district. I think it can serve, uh, a very useful purpose to re-lo, revitalize the area, and we're all in support of that. You can hear some, um, concerns, though, being expressed. A facility like this run well is an attractive addition. A facility like this that gets out of hand can ruin the entire area. It is a special use permit that can legitimately have, uh, limits on it where the facility is reviewed. Uh, we've got a, a group of, um, gentleman's agreements, so to speak, regarding access to the necessary parking. Uh, there is, of course, the potential, when the economy recovers and the El Cortez is doing, uh, the business they strive for, that parking could become an issue, as could the access to some of the other parking facilities become a problem. And so, right now, we're anxious for the business, but five years from now, when we're back to a booming economy, we may say, gosh, why did we do that? I, I don't know. I feel, would feel a lot more comfortable if we had some kind of a joint access agreement like we do on some, uh, businesses where they, uh, the owners of the parking facilities, uh, give a guarantee that you will ha, in fact, have access to it. It might save you folks, uh, future headaches, uh, down the line. I am ready to take action this evening, but between now and the presentation before the, um, city council, I would probably s- suggest that it would strengthen your position if you would have something in writing that documents everyone's enthusiastic support for your, for your project. I don't question what you're saying, but, uh, attitudes sometimes change when business climates change. And so, it might be in your best interest also to have something in writing in support. And, uh, that's, that's where I'm coming from. So, having said that, anyone want to jump out there and make a motion?
Well, Commissioner, I'm, I'm... You request, or, Mr. Chairman, you requested them to have something in writing between now and city council?
He can go forward without it, but, uh, you might get asked for it at that point, and the absence of it might cost you support. So, you've got a couple of weeks to get the letters. It seems like it would be no problem, and it might be just an afternoon going around.
Okay. I talk to Mr. Nolan every day.
Also, the motel behind you and to the, to the, to the south of you. Okay. And, and I'm, I'm of the belief of Commissioner Evans as well. I, Director Wheeler, if we wanted to put a review on here, would it be on the SDR?
Chairman, yes, it would be, it would be on the SUP. Um, the conditions that I'm working with right now would be the changed condition number three, to change the one year, two years, that there be no outside music after two AM.
Correct.
And that there will be a review in one year after issuance of business license at a public hearing of the Planning Commission.
Correct. Okay. I can live with that. Okay. With that, on item nineteen, I'll make a motion for approval of SUP with the amended conditions as read in by Director Wheeler, subject to all staff's recommendations and conditions.
If I could get an indication from the applicant as to agreement with the conditions? Please confer. Please do. Isn't there some kind of appropriate music that should be playing right now while they confer?
Could I, could I ask a question? If, if at the end of that year, uh, for some reason, the Planning Commission decided that, uh, he could no longer do that, then what would we do with the venue? I mean, if he spends a half a million dollars on it, and then in a year, you're saying, no, he can't do it. he can't do it."
Well, let's put it this way. Let's say in a-
I understand.
Let's say in a twelve-month period, three fights break out and Metro starts complaining about crowd down there. Shootings, something's going on in the alley every time there's a party down here, you know? Those are the type things that'll, that'll get you shut down.
Those things, I'm not really worried about. I'm retired, I'm a retired cop myself and I'll assist him in his security.
Well, I'm worried about it.
The, we've got Fremont Street Experience about doing extra security and Metro has been very, very good about controlling that.
But I was just giving, giving you an example, so-
We, we have the city attorney that's anxious to jump involved in a discussion or make a comment.
Well, I've been able to speak once tonight, so I wanted to get on the record. Listen, I think the question was, what happens after a year if we go ahead and revoke the special use permit? Well, the ability to do business in that manner is gone. And so, it's, this is kind of the, an educated risk that most applicants will take. This isn't the first time there's been a review on an, on an item like this and I guarantee it won't be the last. So, the applicant's gonna have to decide, is that something he's interested to do? It sounds to me like this commission is saying, "It might be in his interest to accept such an applica-, or such a condition." Does that answer your question, Chairman?
Does, mine. Okay.
We concur.
Thank you very much. Motion's been made. Those in support of the motion, uh-
I wanna make, I'm, I'm gonna support the motion 'cause I, I, I believe it. We wanna give you the opportunity to, to show us how good this venue can be. But you made a comment with regard to the entertainment district, your involvement over five years and that in the last, you know, for some reason, they haven't, venues haven't been getting opened as well. I can tell you, this planning commission, from the conception of the entertainment district, has bent over backwards to push applications along under this limited license.
It's before we get to this position.
And, you know, if there's some reason that a property owner isn't able to, to get a property up to speed code-wise or, or some other situation out, it, I just wanted to go on the record that the planning commission's always been incredibly supportive of this venue program, so.
Thank you. Motion's been made. Those in support indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposition signify by saying no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, number, item twenty?
Thank you so much.
Item twenty, oh, you're not done yet.
Just, we got one more. Just keep, keep swinging in the breeze.
You won't have to huddle on this one. Move for approval of item twenty, SDR three-three-four-two-six, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition?
Motion's been made.
As amended?
As amended.
Thank you.
Motion's been made. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
In opposition, signify by saying no. Motion carries six-oh.
Goes forward to city council on May sixth.
Thank you.
We now move to item number twenty-one, special use permit thirty-three-three-eight-eight. The applicant is Bargain Hunters LLC. The owner is Jack C. Laird LLC for proposed twenty thousand four hundred and fifty-seven square foot second-hand dealer at twelve hundred South Rainbow Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the use is compatible with the surrounding area and meets the minimum requirements for a special use permit for second-hand dealer and staff recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional comments after publishing.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Those in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and address.
Dan Ballard, eight-nine-six-five Southeastern Avenue, speaking on behalf of the applicant. Here to answer any questions. We appreciate staff's time and councilman's time.
Do you accept the conditions as presented?
Yes.
Okay. The public hearing is now open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak, please approach the microphone. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
I'd like to say, Commissioner, for the record, that I have visited this project and it's the perfect location and it's gonna do great there and I will support you tonight. So, if nobody else has anything to add to it, I will be making a motion for approval on special use permit number twenty-one, SUP three-three-three-eight-eight, with all staff's recommendations, please.
Thank you for the, the motion, Commissioner, but before we vote, could you simply tell us what you're gonna sell in your twenty thousand square foot building?
It's a second-hand dealer, so people used items, miscellaneous things, there's no real restriction on that, just second-hand.
The used cars are gonna be, used trailers?
No, it's more the furniture, you know, furniture, goods.
Thank you.
Half-full items.
Thank you. Okay, motion has been made. Those in support of the motion, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion, motion carries six-oh. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is that final action on?
No, it goes forward to council on May sixth.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-two is, was moved, deleted. Item twenty-three was stricken, so we're item number twenty-four. You want me to hold that for a while?
I want it to go after twenty-six.
Okay, we're gonna do item number twenty-five now, which is the text amendment thirty-three-three-oh-three. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's a discussion and possible action to amend Title nineteen-point-one-oh Parking, Loading and Traffic Standards to establish parking requirements for mixed-use developments. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, what we have before you is a proposed text amendment that would allow a new standard for mixed-use developments. We have not had a standard in place prior to this. The standard that we're using is very similar to what the county uses and basically what it requires is the peak hour parking demand becomes the parking requirement for mixed-use developments. I also have a handout, which I passed out to all of you and provided a copy to the clerk. There was a second part of this that I inadvertently left out of that, and that is to add the parking demand analysis under the Parking Alternative Section entitled nineteen-ten that allows applicants to submit a signed and sealed parking demand analysis prepared by a professional traffic engineer, where the use may demand lesser parking than our code requires. They would be able to submit a parking demand analysis by a special use permit. And so, we'd be able to look at alternative parking standards where the use does not demand such a high parking requirement. And those are the changes that we are proposing this evening and we'll go ahead and take your questions at this time.
Thank you. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to the planning commissioners for discussion. My first question is, I appreciate coming in similar with county standards so that we have some consistency in the way we do things, but where are we different than the county standards and why?
The only significant difference is in terms of the titles of the uses. That the county has somewhat different categories than we do and so we made ours align with Title nineteen, our use table. In terms of the other requirements, they're more or less just about the same as the county's.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions by the planning commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for Flynn, apropos of our joint workshop this week, when we talked about transit-oriented developments, this ordinance, or this parking code, isn't related to the transit-oriented, is it? Or this is just related to mixed-use?
This is just related to mixed-use at this point in time. I'm not sure if you recall, but two years ago, we had proposed a mixed-use and transit-oriented development ordinance, which ultimately did not go forward. There would be a second part of this related to transit-oriented development that you will probably see as part of the form-based code as that comes before you, either later this year or early in two thousand and ten.
'Cause I'm, I'm a big believer that transit-oriented is, is an incredible opportunity going forward. But to me, if we're using transit bicycles and all the public venues, we don't need big parking garages.
And staff would agree.
And I think the code, I think North Las Vegas, if it's a transit-oriented deal, reduces the requirement by twenty or thirty percent, I think it is, right out, just if it is within those transit hubs. And I'm not sure if that's a good number or not, but lastly, I would think if we're gonna look at the transit-oriented going forward, we don't wanna start them off with parking garages.
And you will be seeing that code in oh-nine.
Thank you. Do we have a motion regards to item number twenty-five?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to follow staff's recommendations for approval of the provisions to the mixed-use parking code.
Motion's been made. Those in favor signify by-
If I mean, those were with the changes that you submitted?
With the addition.
Yes.
Thank you. Having said that, the motion's been made. Those in support of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries six-zero.
And it goes forward to council in ordinance form?
We now move to item number twenty-six, which is text amendment thirty-three-seven-oh-three. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's a discussion and possible action to amend Title nineteen-point-oh-four, Table Two and nineteen-oh-two, nineteen-two, nineteen-point-two-zero, to revise regulations applicable zoning districts and description for the small wing, wind energy systems use. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chair and members of the commission, the current regulations pertaining to our small wind energy systems limits them to residential districts. We've had requests from applicants that we be able to permit them on commercial properties. And so, the ordinance that you have before you, or the text amendment that you have before you this evening proposes to extend that to certain commercial districts. Since we finished our staff report and it was distributed, we've heard that there are some additional concerns that we have not expanded this ordinance enough. And so, we would be willing to take your comments at this point in time so that we might be able to craft a better ordinance and better incorporate sustainability principles.
Thank you. There is, there's a public hearing, so I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please do so by approaching the microphone and making your name and address and stating your case.
Hello, I'm Alan McLean, Alan McLean Electric. I'd like to just talk a little bit about the variances and heights restrictions and things like that. What they've limited, limited everything to so far is anything two acres and above. What we're trying to do is saying, and I don't know if my numbers are gonna be actually correct right here, but I asked for a report to see how many people in Las Vegas have two acres and above and it's somewhere around the two thousand mark. If we could bring that thing down to about a half-acre parcel, that would bring it up to about twenty thousand people that would be able to use wind energy. And we think it'd be a great thing for the city. We've also seen some recommendations from Southwest Wind Power, which we sent those to the city of Las Vegas. We have some of these that are zoning ordinances that they have written. On the conditions, the only thing that we see that, we think there would be a great thing that would happen would be if we could limit, limit that instead of two-acre parcels to half-acre. Bring this thing down from tower heights from one and a half times, maybe bring that down just a little bit and just expand the zoning. And that's really kinda what, what we're looking at, but other than that, everything else is a great, we think it's a great, you know, approval, staff recommendation. I ran down here kind of, I wasn't very well-prepared when I was asked to come down here, but I wrote a couple of little things that I could talk about. Where is this at here? I'm actually gonna put one of these at my house and I live at a, I live in the county, which is at basically Anne and Durango. And my acre, I have an acre parcel and I'm gonna put one of these little wind turbines up at probably about thirty feet from my house. So they're pretty quiet and I don't see why you would wanna limit it to two acres when you have a vast majority of people that might want them at an acre and a half.
You're gonna put, question, if you're gonna put this at your house at Anne and Durango-
Sure.
-on an acre parcel, what height is what you're planning?
These are pretty small units that are going in and what they've done is, a lot of these wind manufacturers have brought them down to what they consider an average for a home, which is two and a half kilowatts. The total, the total height is only thirty-three feet for a pole with the wingspan, which is only six feet, so it'll bring it up to about forty-two feet at the max. They also come in heights of poles, which, you know, range from, you know, thirty-three feet to about sixty feet. These things are made for residential areas. They're made for half-acre properties. They tie to the grid. They're great for renewable energy. Very quiet.
They also make very efficient ones that are much smaller than that, right?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
That are, and there's probably fifty different designs, some are vertical fans-
Right, there's all kinds of different types.
That you, you wouldn't even see in a residential use.
Sure.
And they work at a much lower wind speed, right?
Yes, yes, they do.
I believe in this technology. I think it's, it's an incredible thing and actually, in the right scenario, like the look of these, you know, they're big pinwheels. Any kid loves pinwheels. But my concern is, we, we have big, big issues in this community with cell towers, towers that, short-wave radio, ham radio operators, things that, that don't fit in every residential neighborhood. And I just, I would like to see something in here that prohibits any of these structures to be dual-use going forward.
Sure, I'm with you on that.
I mean, I, last thing I want is somebody to tack on about six antennas onto it and it'll look like, you know, or they mount their satellite antenna halfway up the pole. I mean, bottom line is, we could make, we could make these as incitely as possible or we can actually make it a, kind of an attractive, you know, for like a bit, an attractive nuisance 'cause I, I still think some people are not gonna be happy with this.
Sure.
And what we saw here, 'cause it talks about some of this commercial, are much larger fans, or much larger turbines. And when I looked at this, a hundred and fifty feet for a pole, without, without knowing the diameter of the blades, that could be a significant impact.
Correct.
So, I, I think this is gonna be something we have to take in steps. I, I would, I wouldn't support this if we were gonna put it on half-acre lots today.
Sure.
County may not care what happens in the county islands, but bottom line is, if these, when these were proposed for two-acre parcels, and if you look at the much smaller ones, they are really incidental. People don't, won't be focused on them. But if we do this wrong, we will wind up with some very large turbines in the wrong place and impacting neighbors in a, in a less than attractive manner.
Right. You know, that's, you know, kinda the only thing. I just wanna come up here and, you know, just say that, you know, they do have a lot of great products out there, you know, that are, like you said, that they're actually kinda neat-looking, some of them. And the only thing, I just, you know, we're really pushing on the renewable energy and things like that and, you know, we don't want it to be limited to certain people because, you know, a lot of people would love to put these things on their property.
But in the name of renewable energy, we, if we jump in this without thinking it through, the rule of unintended consequences is we could really make some very attractive neighborhoods incredibly unsightly. And if this becomes a runaway train, no one will wanna get on board with it. So, it makes a little more sense to maybe do this methodically, ask, ask the questions that are probably more difficult to ask, but in the name of renewable, it's just like in the name of change, for change's sake, isn't good change. We, we need to do the right things. There's, there's photovoltaic systems that people wouldn't even know are in their yards and would make great neighborhood and it would get us to a renewable energy. There's, like I say, there's great turbine systems out there, but if we, if we don't try to craft this as somewhat restrictive going into it, we will wind up just opening the door and by the time we correct it, we'll wind up with losing some sections that become less than attractive.
Commissioner Truze, if, can I ask a question here? If it's under a special use permit, they still gotta come back in and each time they wanna put one of these in, homeowners or, or propertors, still gonna have to come in and seek the special use permit. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think, yeah, they do, but the question is, there's enough things for neighbors to have to come down and speak up to protect their rights. That if we craft this properly, what comes before us will be somewhat controlled. Neighbors will know, hopefully have more what to expect. So you don't have to come down, we don't need twenty people down here just asking the questions every time there's an application. If people have faith that we're doing the right thing on these, on this code going in.
Some guidelines is what you're suggesting.
Let's go ahead and get the public input, and then we have a discussion at the planning commission level. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak?
My name's Terry Myers, Allen Sun Valley Automotive, four five five three North Rancho. When Alan talked to me about this project, I thought it was great. Renewable energy, energies on everybody's mind right now. We've gone green with a lot of recycling that we've never done before and working with the government now as a fleet account. We're using recycled oil, biodegradable oil filters. These things cost a lot of money. It's just, it's a new thing out there. So what we want to look at on a business level as well, that we're on an acre and a half. So when I heard the two acres was the, the minimum, it's like, ah, why don't I get that other half acre? It's only another million dollars. But then we look at the setback, and while the setback is what I heard, that puts it in the middle of my building or parking lot. So as a business, tell something's set up, you wouldn't buy a piece of property without planning that in. Now that I'm in, after five years of the struggle of getting in, I'd love to have one of these. It cost me ninety-one thousand dollars four months ago to put three-phase power in, to save in the long run for my power. So these hits are, are pretty hard. The initial investment on this is something that's really nice, to be able to put back on the power grid to show that we, you know, just not the hype of going green, but you're doing something for it. These are pretty cool. Maybe I can get something subliminal on it so it come in for an oil change. I don't know. But, you know, going down-
You don't need that. I was in there at nine o'clock last night getting my oil changed.
Over till midnight soon, twenty-four hours.
He's open, he's open till midnight. Great place.
And I could have made probably a lot of money back during yesterday and today, just on every time this thing spins. But nonetheless, just to see that it's an option, it's available, and it's going to be things that are, like you said, for neighborhoods coming in, I would hope that the older folks maybe look at this and say, yeah, it's a different world right now. The younger people get on board. So when one person puts it in a neighborhood, people are, hey, we're all for it. How unsightly can it be? Well, you know, we see the, the cell towers now look like palm trees and pine trees. So there's, you know-
Not really.
Well, from a distance, you know, it just looks like weird bird's nest. But for a business, I think it's great. I'd love to have a lot of these. And, you know, where could I put them? Obviously, you know, but I've got a wall that, you know, it's five or ten feet that goes down a whole length of an acre and a half. Be a great place to go, like you said.
If you, if you go by, if, if you would have gone by several years ago, every car dealership on West Sahara that had big pinwheels, balloons, banners flying, I mean, a clutter of-
Right, I see what you're saying.
If, if we look at this at businesses and we don't plan it to what it is, an energy source-
Oh, sure.
And an appropriate source, it will turn into, we have buildings down on Eastern, they paint them chartreuse, canary yellow. I mean, Commissioner Evans is always complaining about the, the fine building colors down there, but-
A little Miami influence, a little color's nice though.
And these things can be colored up a hundred different ways, but that isn't what they're for. They're not signs.
Right.
And when we talk about commercial-
It's not big blow-up things that are dancing around.
We need to be real specific. Otherwise, we'll wind up with-
Well, I think when people finally see, this is something new. This is something that really hasn't been before. And, and if this gets out in some advertisement and people see this, I mean, this is just the way it's going to have to go. The government has said, they'll supplement me on buying these biodegradable oil filters. I think that's great. I mean, this is something that you can literally put in a landfill and, and feel good about it. The soaps we're using now are completely safe to put right into our sand filtration system and into the sewer system they go. So it's, you know, it's not like your old solvents and things that were very aggressive, but we're all dealing with, with the trade-off. And I think that with this renewal energy is, is great. I mean, up until three weeks ago, I couldn't buy oil in bulk cheaper and I can buy it in a plastic container in a big cardboard box. And it was just, what a waste to throw all that into a landfill. And it's just ridic, I just don't understand it. So I think it's just getting people to start understanding. This planet can't keep taking this, and this is the way of the future. Solar would be a great way to go on our roofs. I mean, we just need to start pushing for this. But a two acre parcel above, I'm the little guy, you know, I'm the Joe Plumber they were talking about. I'm the one that'll die in three to be able to sell everything. I want to put something like this together, make a go at it. And it's scaring me at this time.
So basically, you support it, but you would like it not to be one and a half, two acres?
I think if it can fit, you know, it's, it's like we said, we got to look at it. I'm not jumping right now. Let's just get me in and let's see.
But you don't want it limited to two acres, and you're absolutely supportive of the gist of the-
I think if it, if it will fit the project and everybody can see it looks good, heck, let's put one up on my place, see what it looks like. If you don't like it, let's take it down. I'm willing to take that shot. And I think it's, it's more of a, you know, again, obviously, one mechanically, it's got to be sound safety, things like that. Airplanes aren't flying into it, but, but if it doesn't turn out to be as ungodly as all of these Wendy's signs and things like that.
Let's, let's get back to procedures rather than having an open debate. Anyway, thank you for your presentation. Anyone else in attendance like to speak on the matter before I turn over the planning commissioners for their questions and discussion?
My name is Stephen Fatsco at five two two eight Cricket Sky Circle. I actually went around to some of the, in the residential area where Alan McLean wants to put this up and talked to the residents. And the majority, I think we had thirty people in that neighborhood that agreed and signed, and were really interested in this. And kind of waiting to see how it's going to look and how it will be taken on into the community of his neighborhood.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Mr. Farlow, you're, you're green all the way, and we know that. And I'll make the speech that you were going to make, and you didn't even know that, did you? Okay, I'd like to declare the public hearing closed now and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion regarding this matter.
Just a, a brief comment. I just think, before you close it, Commissioner, that it's wonderful when people like you sit here all night long to speak about making our community better and about bringing ideas to us, because without people like you giving it the feedback, we wouldn't know. And I applaud you for coming out here and for sitting here all night with your guests. And it says a lot about you as a citizen and you folks as citizens of Las Vegas. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now let me make my comments and give the speech that Mr. Farlow was going to give. You know, we're, we're very supportive of renewable energies in sustainable communities and need to realize that when we adopt various regulations that are going to control development and the use of some of this new technology, we need to be open to new technology, but at the same time cautious so that we don't wind up doing something that's going to be detrimental in the long run. I think that the issue of the height of the, the towers is, is absolutely critical. I know that from a technological point of view, they have to be a certain number of feet higher than the tallest buildings within a certain perimeter of the, of the central pole or the things don't work. And so we, we need to be cognizant of that. The size of the propellers totally change the dynamics in the energy generation. They, it also significantly impacts the expense, the operating costs and the, the production and the maintenance and the noise levels. You know, and then the, I'll, I'll speak on behalf of the animal rights people and say it also affects the wildlife to some extent. There's also new technology that we don't address with this particular proposal. So what I see is this proposal being a, a major step in the right direction. The new technology that I'm speaking of is added in the area, not so much of the actual turbines, but more of the cylindrical devices that are the new ways to go, that sometimes are no larger than a, a large fifty-five gallon drum that can even be roof mounted, that are in the same generation capacity as what you're talking. They're getting to the point where you can have one that'll reduce your power bills by fifty percent for seven thousand dollars. And payback time on something like that's a year, two years. And so it's real significant. But we can't address all those things right now. But I, I am certainly sympathetic to your position about the size of the lots. You know, we don't have many acreage lots in town that are two acres inside. And I would be supportive of consideration of changing that requirement down to about a one acre. But it also depends upon the proximity to the, to the neighbors' properties, and that is for safety reasons, just in the, everyone's still, I know it may be totally unfounded, but people are still concerned about the, the prop style blowing over and landing in somebody else's yard. And that's the undeniable justification based upon current fears. But I still want to leave the door open for, you know, the second generation of this document to come forward that does address some of the new technologies. So it's a, it's a living document that we're taking a look at this time.
And, and we're glad to see this coming. We're just kind of out, just supportive and-
The city's taking a giant step in the right direction.
And looking at some other different things, you know, so.
Thank you. Anybody else care to comment?
The gentleman says you've talked to a neighborhood, you went out and talked to a lot of people in a neighborhood about signing up, you know, interest in this. What, it come, come up here a second, I want to ask a question, because I think this is how some of this gets kind of afield. When you talked to these neighbors, what were you describing to them?
Well, actually, we took some brochures of the actual structure that we wanted to set up. And I think the majority of the questions was more of the noise instead of the height, the, being an obstacle. But they were more happier that people were trying to try different things to get renewable energy. And I think that's what their excitement was in their tone.
But you went door, you went, talked to a lot of people-
Yes, I actually went to-
And showed them brochures of some product that you wanted to sell or some-
Correct.
That was a blade turbine, right?
Correct.
Okay. If you went back to that same group of people and said, we've got these cylindrical fans that operate with half the wind speed, generate a little more power per, per invested dollar, what do you think their thoughts would be?
I think they'd still be excited.
They would be probably more excited.
Correct.
And that's where I think us as a planning commission, as a city, we got to be pro this development, but there's some great technology. This is not new. I mean, windmills on farms throughout this country, two hundred years ago. And, but if we wanted to put those type of windmills in people's yards, I think we probably would have a real heartburn with the, the size of lots. So I just want us to, to have a very concise plan so we can, as a community, embrace good technology, cutting edge, cutting edge technology, and not grab the first train coming by and have a problem. Because there's going to be issues of maintenance on these things. You know, this isn't just like whether somebody doesn't mow their lawn. I mean, there, there's maintenance issues, and just saying you have it is, it's nice. We all want to be green, but-
And I think some of the concerns was also the, the size of the land. Some mentioned that they would be really interested in it, but then again, they're on an acre, but they'd still be interested in it and what are the procedures to go through that.
Any other points of discussion? Because I think the proposal that's before us today would, would provide the opportunity for lot size and setback limitations now to be addressed on a waiver basis. So if someone came forward and really wanted to do it, we could take it into consideration. And one of the first things we would consider is, what do the neighbors on either side of you have to say about it? And if they're in support of it, then I'd see that as a big indicator of the way a, a governing body might, might rule.
Sure.
Okay. So do we have a motion in regards to item number twenty-six?
If I may, we'd like to obey it to April twenty-third. We'll take all the comments that you've brought to us, and then he'll be coming back.
Okay, then we've had, we're going to-
That's Flynn's request.
Okay, the request of staff, we're going to, I make a motion, we would hold this item in abeyance until April when?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, signify by saying no. None. So the motion to obey to a later date is, carries six to one. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir.
We can now move to item number twenty-four, the DIR thirty-three six seventy-one, which is the applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. It's a discussion regarding the March twenty-third Joint City Council Planning Commission Workshop on redevelopment. Staff report, please.
If anything anybody wants to say about anything.
Oh, so we're not going to have a staff report. We're going to have a, a commission report.
It says, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk because my microphone is on. I would like to simply report that the workshop was excellent. It was well attended. I think that the presentations that were made included a lot of new information that helped us upgrade our thinking and update our thinking. I think that the types of communities that we were exposed to are probably the wave of the future. I think that what the city needs to do in anticipation of our recovering economy is to accept this as opportunity now to take a look at our various codes, our policies, our procedures that we have in place, and see what we can do about streamlining them. As we just had a discussion in the prior item where we talked about new technologies coming into place, I think we need to be ready to respond to those new technologies. I think that we need to look at certain things such as our parking requirements. If we're in fact going to be moving so much away from larger, larger homes to smaller homes in anticipation of what I found to be surprising but informative comment that was made, and that was that in twenty years, only twelve percent of the homes are going to involve children. That's a reflection of the maturing of the population, the empty nesters, the retirees that are coming here. And so perhaps some of our parking regulations are a little overreaching. You know, as we approve development, we need to be cognizant and to encourage, and perhaps even provide incentives for developments to occur along our transportation corridors where public transportation is more available, where access via foot or by bike is, is there for parking, for work opportunities, for parks and for schools. I think that we need to take a look at making a more walkable community out of Las Vegas and probably take a serious look at some of these walled communities we have. They were quite the rage some years ago, and now we have an entire community that's blocked walls. And I think that's detrimental to the development of a sense of community in our city. And that's my thoughts and observations as a result of the meeting on the twenty-third.
And I just wanted to say that I learned a lot about the wave of the future of Las Vegas, and it was very well presented. But what I think that I came away with the most is what we can do with blighted areas that can turn into great areas as the misfortune could turn into the fortunate for others. And it was very well put on. A lot of hard work went into it, and it was the first one I've ever attended. And I, and I personally learned a lot, and I liked being with the rest of the council and with the entire staff. I think it was a great way of camaraderie, and I appreciate all the time and effort that everybody put into it. And thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and actually Director Reeder, here's my question. I thought a lot about the, the events we had, or the event we had. How do we convince homeowners that it's okay to have businesses right next door? Because that's, that's the, the problem I see. I mean, I, I understand the concept. We're running out of resources. We're running out of space. Or we shouldn't be using up so much space, put it that way. But how do we convince a homeowner, you know, it's okay?
You aren't going to convince every homeowner. And I think what, what to us were the new things that we wanted to present and a, and a new way of thinking is that the types of neighborhoods that are created are not just downtown high-rise and far rural, but that there's different levels of communities, there's different types of neighborhoods that persons want to live in. And from a, from a zoning and land use point of view is to allow for neighborhoods to be different and allow for there to be different lifestyles accommodated in different neighborhoods. So that there's always going to be those that want to live in the rural fringe. But to create like miniature downtowns throughout the city allows for those different levels, the, the walkable suburban, and I can't name them all, but the five different types of communities. And to allow for those kinds of communities to be throughout this large city that we have so that those that wish to take that option can do so. And that when you have commercial and residential nearby or in the same building, that it's designed appropriately- or in the same building, that it's designed appropriately so as to enhance the value of both uses, rather than to the detriment of both uses. And so, it's that, it's that design compatibility that's important, and I think creating the options of different kinds of neighborhoods, that's important. So that you aren't convincing anybody of anything that they don't want, but you're making available to different markets that which they do want.
So then we're looking at pockets where we have commercial development already, but then we say, in addition to the, 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 the commercial work that's avail, we can put in some residential there as well, and, and that should be okay? Is, am I reading that correctly?
Both ways, yes. One of the obvious examples, and we gave you some paperwork on that, even though we didn't speak to it directly, but is regional shopping malls, that were all the rage for years, are now falling on much harder times, as there's difference in the markets, and many of these regional malls are being positioned to add residential uses, to turn outside, to add, um, additional commercials, so that you have existing commercial where residential can be added, and you have residential areas where there may be a way to sensitively add commercial to that neighborhood. So it's both ways.
Okay, thank you.
In, in response to that comment, I would, I would simply say that I think that, that approach is, is excellent, and I think it's the way to go. But I also hear you saying that we need to do a pretty good job upfront, of planning the types of smaller communities that we have, that do reflect differing lifestyles, socioeconomic preferences, uh, and, once we establish those types of master plans, we could call them, let's say, uh, we do a much better job of sticking to those master plans, and be a little more hesitant on variances. So if someone wants to come forward and propose something that's inconsistent with one particular neighborhood that we've created, that we can stand fast and say, "No, take it to the one over here, that's more appropriate for that type of, of business or development."
And, Mr. Chairman, um, in getting neighbors to buy into things, we have to do, as a city, as a community, need to do a better job of explaining what infill is, and truly have a, a commitment to fill in some of these infill parcels in this community, because we wouldn't be sprawling to the, the hills here if we developed all of the infill parcels, and we would have better use of our resources, and, and even traditional neighborhoods, um, some traditionally, traditional neighborhoods with subtle design changes. I, I think one of the things that wasn't presented at the workshop, but it was presented at a, a meeting I went to, that the city was involved with, the downtown tour, the next day, had a presentation by Public Works, and it was the first time in all the years I've dealt with the city of Las Vegas, where I had, heard Public Works say, "We're gonna look at one-way corridors." But they didn't use the word "one-way," single directional streets. Um, it's kinda like when I don't have a war on terror, we have this overseas, uh, meeting, I guess. But, the, the issue is, if we had small-gridded, single-family developments with single-directional streets, much smaller paved areas, homes would, could be, uh, closer, neighbors could get along, and you didn't have to fence everything off, we could have some great infill neighborhoods that would be cost-effective, and not cost-effective because we made them, uh, affordable housing, they would just be cheaper to build, and cheaper to maintain as a city. And we wouldn't need big overgrown cul-de-sacs at the end of streets, we would have narrower streets that, that wrapped around the neighborhood. And, these communities are all over the country today, there's, they're being built. And also, sustainable neighborhoods without garages, where people have curbside parking, homes are, uh, nice, and all of that is kind of the layering that can go up to these transit-oriented developments. We, we have to encourage the, the home builders, the development community, the council, everybody in our community, that there are better ways to do what we do, and it's not just, "Well, it's Las Vegas, we've always done it that way."
I think that was the presentation that Flynn gave on the road diets, that how you can take existing roads and then, and reconfigure them and make them-
'Cause I guarantee you, if not one person's room can walk across Sahara Avenue at Rainbow and make it in the light, unless you're jogging. I mean, and those aren't pedestrian-friendly streets, those are, those are minor freeways inside our city.
Anybody else have any, anybody have any other thoughts to share?
Just one quick thought, I, I, some of the stuff I heard out there, like I, like, and I'll use the term again, the, the exosuburban ghetto, and, and to me, it, it, it said, again, we start doing things when it starts affecting new areas, for instance, like out in Ward Six. You know, there's a, there's a proliferation of houses out there that are now, um, matter of fact, in the paper today, eight-nine-one-three-one, one of the highest foreclosure areas there. But a lot of the things that I heard the speaker speak about using to solve those are already in some of our, our areas, especially in Ward Five, some of the criteria, streets, uh, high-density area, um, streets that, uh, are on transit veins. But I don't see any, any of this great development happening down there, you know? And, and I hear from the residents of that area as well, that when's it gonna happen down there, because everything is there. Um, we're doing a widening project on Martin Luther King, but I, and, and as I was listening to him speak, I got to wondering, you know, are we putting in the bicycle lane on Martin Luther King? Are we making it as aesthetically pleasing as what this speaker was saying would, would spur growth and sustainability within the, within the area? And, and so I think we can't forget our, our core areas that have been in existence for a long time, we can't leave those out, we can't leave it out. And just like, um, just like Rick said, and I said it at the conference, uh, when I drive by Main and Owens, and I look at the Salvation Army, I look at that whole corner, that is almost a ward within Ward Five, that basically caters to the home, to the homeless. So when we look at the planning, all of this has to be taken in consideration, especially in our older areas that have sustained for a long time, and no matter what happens out on the fringes, these areas are always there, and, and the people are always there. So, so I just don't want that area to be left out.
Primary emphasis is on the existing neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I'll declare the, uh, item number twenty-four to-
Oh, correct, you got two more.
Do you have more?
I'm sorry. Citizen participation, you're right.
Okay, okay, I'll declare item number twenty-four, as to having, uh, this concluded and having run its course with our input being provided. We can now move on to item number twenty-seven, which is citizen's participation. Citizen's participation, the public comment during this portion of the agenda may be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion for any single subject, as well as the amount of time for any single speaker, uh, may be limited.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street, I'm not a happy camper. On item number twelve, back to that sidewalk thing, the applicant came up and made his thing, and he says, "We, we met with Nevada Power and, and the city, and everybody had a nice pow-wow, and we all came to this, uh, conclusion that everything's all right. So I went back to sleep and sit there, and then they opened it up to the, to the board here, and then I find out that everything is, all kinds of changes have been made." And you know, that's, that's just not fair, that's not fair. But one thing, when the motion was made to approve that, the applicant, the application was for variance, for a four-foot sidewalk, and that was changed to a, to a less, to a three-and-a-half-foot sidewalk. But when that motion was made, it didn't, the motion didn't say, "And I changed, and instead of four-foot sidewalk, we are now gonna have a three-and-a-half-foot sidewalk." That wasn't made in the motion. And, you know, I just, I, usually, usually, when, when the motion is made, they, they, they mention the variance or, or, or the, the, uh, the change that was made, and that wasn't made there. So I, it's, you know, for whatever it's worth. But anyway, that's, is, I just don't think it's right, that the applicant can come up here and say, "Everything's all right and everything," and then we find out that it's, that it's totally different. Thank you, goodnight.
Thank you. Any other, uh, individuals wishing to make a, a comment under the public presentation? Seeing none, I'll declare the, the public input portion closed. Uh, anyone wish to respond or comment? Okay, thank you very much, and I'll conclude the evening, and we'll adjourn.